Okay, welcome to day two of the virtual hearings into the long term sustainability and future of the timber and forest products industry. Before I commence, I would like to acknowledge the Gadigal people who are the traditional custodians of the land on which Parliament sits. I also acknowledge the traditional custodians of the various lands on which my colleagues are joining today, as well as all people participating in today's hearing. I would like to pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging, and extend that respect to all Aboriginal people who may be present today. Today's hearing is the committee's second and is being conducted as a fully virtual hearing. This enables the work of the committee to continue during the COVID-19 pandemic without compromising the health and safety of members, witnesses and staff. As we break new ground with the technology, I would ask for everyone's patience through any technical difficulties we may encounter today. If participants lose their internet connection and are disconnected from the virtual hearing, they are asked to rejoin the hearing by using the same link as provided by the committee secretary. Today, we'll be hearing from organisations representing the timber and building industry as well as academics. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the virtual hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. And there may be some questions that a witness could only answer if they had more time or with certain documents to hand. In these circumstances, witnesses are advised that they can take a question on notice and provide an answer within 21 days. Today's proceedings are being streamed live and a transcript will be placed on the committee's website once it becomes available. Finally, a few notes on virtual hearing etiquette to minimise disruptions and assist our handside reporters. Can I ask committee members to clearly identify who questions are directed to? And could I ask everyone to please state their name when they begin speaking? Could everyone please mute their microphones when they're not speaking? Please remember to turn your microphones back on when you're getting ready to speak. If you start speaking while muted, please start your question or answer again so it can be recorded in the transcript. And members and witnesses should avoid speaking over each other so we can all be heard clearly. I remind members and witnesses to speak directly into the microphone and avoid making comments when your head is turned away. So I will now welcome our first witnesses. And I would ask, starting with Mr Stephen Dad, to state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation. And I believe the oath or the affirmation has been emailed to you.
Thank you, Mark. My name is Stephen Dad. I'm the National General Manager for Boral's Building Products Division. I'll use the affirmation if I may. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Mr Morton?
Thank you, Chair. Adam Morton, I'm the Category Manager for Timber for Bunnings, for the sourcing of timber for the Australian Bunnings business. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Mr Cost?
Thank you, Chair. Rod Cost, General Manager, Commercial Bunnings Group. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Now, would any of you like to make an opening statement? Starting with you, Stephen, given that we don't have submissions from you, we'd love to perhaps give an opening statement.
Yes, thank you, Mark. I would like to offer an opening statement if I may. First of all, thanks for the opportunity to appear before the inquiry. As I mentioned, I'm the National General Manager for Boral Building Products Division, but I'm also a Director of Forest and Wood Products Australia, which is one of our research RDCs and a Director of the Australian Forest Products Association. In New South Wales, Boral runs a softwood business producing mostly house framing and a hardwood business focused on high-end decorative products. More than 70% of our resources source from plantations and the remaining comes from regrowth state forests. Most of our supply is subject to long-term contracts. Our customers include the main channels into the domestic building and construction market and some niche customers, and I'm very pleased to say that Bunnings is one of our important customers. We employ close to 500 people, mostly in regional centres and mostly New South Wales. And I'd point out too that our business has been around for 128 years. You'd be familiar with a lot of our timber in the old buildings in Macquarie Street. We did the Gluland beams in the Sydney Opera House and we laid the original deck on the Harbour Bridge. So we know something about sustainability. Look, there's no question that we've seen some extraordinary changes in the timber supply and demand dynamics lately. Catastrophic fires in our plantations and our regrowth forests, COVID-driven collapse in trade, a surge in housing demand and renovations, and also a growing awareness of timber's role in the transition to the circular bioeconomy. I guess in combination with an historical under-investment in plantations and reductions from the regrowth state forests, we really do face at the moment a chronic shortage of timber, which could, you know, if left unchecked, undermine our post-COVID state construction lead recovery. You've probably noticed yesterday's media release from the HIO and AFPA that there's talk of a 250,000 house frame deficit building by 2035. That is significant to our economy. I mean, typically, in a situation like this, a market response would rationally see investment and over time, a rebalancing of that supply and demand. But for some time now, we've seen a market failure in New South Wales. And it's driven by uncertainty and it's driven by conflict. We have great uncertainty in wood supply. The supply since the fires from any of our mills has been chaotic, to say the least. We have uncertainty in plantation investment policy, we have uncertainty in carbon treatment, we have uncertainty in water, land management, environmental policy. And in terms of the conflict, well, the conflict politics, which has been present for every day in my 20 years in the industry, is becoming exhausting. To get past this conflict and investment uncertainty, we need to treat our plantations like any other agricultural activity. And we also need to use science, not ideology, to show that our tightly managed mixed-use state forests are not mutually exclusive to biodiversity, carbon abatement and other beneficial land uses. I find it very unsettling that there is constant challenge to the future of our hardwood state forests. If through neglect or policy, we follow the path of Victoria and Western Australia, we seriously face an enormous loss of regional employment. We face an irreversible vacuum of assets and skills to fight fires into the future and protect communities. We face the loss of unique expertise in forest management, including the reawakening of indigenous forestry practices. We also change forever the experience of tens of millions of recreational visitations each year to our state forests. And we place enormous pressure on tropical old growth forests through imports. We also stand to lose so many emerging opportunities to grow new industries as we transition to the bioeconomy, some really exciting stuff coming through in the space of bioenergy, bioplastics, et cetera. And I guess finally, we turn our back on the really positive contribution that our forests and our forest industries can have on major global environmental challenges. So I suppose just in summary, if I may, from a Boral and an industry perspective, we'd like to see a commitment to more trees in the ground in line with our industry billion tree policy. We'd like to see policy stability in New South Wales to give us an investment horizon, particularly in hardwood where government departments seem to be at loggerheads in how to manage wood supply, particularly since the fires. And finally, we'd like to see ongoing support for the state forest as a permanent mixed-use asset for regrowth fibre, for recreation and for biodiversity. There's no simple transition to plantations and there will always be a role for a well-managed, sustainably managed state forest. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Now, Andrew or Rod, would you like to make a statement on behalf of Bunnings?
Yes, please, Chair. So on behalf of Mr Morton and of course Bunnings, thank you for the opportunity to appear before the committee this morning. By way of introduction, Bunnings has a rich history operating in Australia since 1886. We currently employ approximately 48,000 people across Australia, across some 338 trading locations. Over time, we have evolved from a small family-owned timber mill to becoming a leading retailer of home improvement and lifestyle products. Our business is wholly owned subsidiary of the AIX listed Westfarmers. We have support officers and distribution centres across Australia to support our business operations and we're proud of our strong presence in rural and regional Australia where we employ a significant number of team members. Bunnings sources timber and timber products for retail and commercial customers from areas across Australia, including New South Wales. Bunnings' policy has always accepted timber certified under Forest Stewardship Council and programmed for the endorsement of forest certification responsible wood, along with low-risk plantation and product demonstrated progress to certified responsibly sourced. We continue to source timber in New South Wales that meets these requirements. Between the COVID-19 pandemic and the legacy of the Black Summer bushfires, the timber industry has come under significant pressure over the past few years due to demand exceeding available supply. Restrictions imposed due to COVID across New South Wales, Victoria and Tasmania, while necessary, have impacted the supply of materials and shortages in structural timber have been exacerbated by increased demand from the building and housing sector. These shortages and impacts have been felt industry-wide, limiting the operations and capacity of all timber suppliers and retailers. Like all Australian businesses, Bunnings has been directly impacted by the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Throughout the pandemic, Bunnings has worked with all levels of government to ensure ready access to essential and emergency hardware items to keep Australians' homes safe and secure, by also protecting the health and safety of our team, customers and suppliers. In August, we temporarily closed stores in Greater Sydney to retail customers, operating for trade customers and emergency products only. We have since reopened all stores in Sydney in line with the health advice, although we continue to monitor and swiftly respond to any lockdowns as they occur. At all times throughout the pandemic, Bunnings has prioritised the safety of our team and customers, as well as compliance with state government restrictions. Bunnings was one of the first businesses to introduce face masks as a condition of entry and has maintained a relentless focus on safety, including deep cleaning of stores daily, distancing requirements, contactless payment options and limiting customer numbers in stores. We continue to ask fundable and at-risk team members to remain at home during outbreaks for their wellbeing. And while Bunnings has not applied for Jobkeeper, last financial year, we provided these team members with more than 1.8 million in pandemic leave. Most recently, space vaccination hubs has been provided at several Sydney stores to increase access for our team and trade customers. I look forward to your questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And I'll throw to Mick Beach to start the questioning for the opposition.
Thank you all for your attendance today. I detect that you both read from opening statements and I was just wondering if it would be possible, in lieu of not having a submission from your organisations, if you might be able to email those to the secretary at the opening statement so we can actually maybe have a look at the transcripts? It's just a request. So I come from Tummit, so I've got a pretty fair idea about the impact of the Black Summer on the softwood supply. Can I, and I think that actually there was a fire to stress or pressure test our policy settings in the timber forestry space, which was highlighted by last summer. My question is, I've got two questions really that I want to explore today. First is, the shortage of supply is clearly having an impact on the construction of houses in Australia and New South Wales. Is there any way of quantifying what the additional cost is of that supply issue at the moment on building a house? Might start with Mr Dad.
Yes, thanks, Mick. Look, you're right about the supply shortages. We're seeing long lead times now opening up for the supply of frames and trusses and other components too. And that's exacerbated obviously by real difficulty getting imported products, which exposes the reliance of our domestic industries to imports in this space. It's very hard for me to put a price on how much this is costing us, but anecdotal evidence suggests that many building products, but particularly timber, is increasing, you know, 20, 30% in recent times. And I guess you've also got some labour constraints exacerbated by COVID and also the shift from multi-rise to, you know, to more single dwellings. So I think all in all, this is costing us in delays and it's costing our market significantly in price.
Thank you, Mr Cost?
Yeah, thank you. It's a bit like Stephen, hard to sort of quantify for us, no doubt. We're seeing longer lead times and if I just think about our frame and trust plants, which is obviously early in the build stage. So when we look at our supply to customers, we take a framework really from, you know, the build stages of a new home and that sort of plays out in renovations and other projects as well. And obviously timber, although used in different parts of the build stage, is quite substantial from a value point of view, early in the build stage around frames. And we sort of estimate inside the value of a house, of materials supplied in a house, about 14% of the total value sits in that frame space. So for us, it's quite a significant piece. It's early in the build stage and then the current delays we're getting. So from a frame and trust plant point of view, normal lead times for us, maybe four to six weeks. We're seeing, you know, it's case by case, but somewhere between eight to 16 weeks lead time to get frame and trust out to our builder customers. So that obviously adds complexity to the project timelines, also the cost, and also sort of the scheduling of trades becomes a challenge for the builders as well. So I might refer to my colleague, Mr Morton, if he wants to add a bit more flavour around the cost of the product.
Sure. So thanks for the question, Mr Beach. From a sourcing perspective, we, alongside most other merchants in the country, source a mix of locally produced framing timber and imported framing timber. So we've seen that the cost of locally produced timber has been escalating just because of, you know, a number of different factors, including, you know, availability of logs on the back of the bushfires. And also the import, you know, demand globally has been significant. You know, the factors that are driving the economy here are in place over in America and Europe and other parts of the world as well. So global demand for timber's never been higher. And on the back of that, there's also significant challenges with shipping globally, which have been escalating prices, not just for timber, but for any imported goods. So that figure that Mr Dad mentioned earlier of around sort of 30% would certainly be ballpark, depending on where you are in the country and what your supply chain looks like, it could be a little bit higher than that as well.
Thank you. So I think Mr Dad spoke about the need for a plantation investment policy. And I'm sort of trying to get my head around, in the timber space, forest space, policy settings generally are long-term. So they're not electoral cycle, which, you know, for every four years, change of government or whatever changes the policy settings. Essentially, you need a, for softwood, about a 20-year investment strategy. And for hardwood, particularly hardwood plantation, I'm gathering about a 50-year strategy. Would that be, would that be correct? And also, Mr Dad, what sort of, when you talk about plantation investment policy, what do you actually mean by that?
Yes, probably more like 30 years would be the minimum for a sawlog for the softwood industry. It's a bit longer than 20 years. At 20 years, you might be able to harvest some low-grade timber, some small logs, some thinnings for, you know, for panels. But for sawmills and for framing timber, you're really starting at 30 years. And you're about right for hard, 50 years, probably for a decent hardwood sawlog. Look, in terms of policy settings, there's a number of things. One of the biggest areas of uncertainty, I suppose, for investors is, in a sense, an overhang from the old MIS days, which burnt a lot of people and has scarred a lot of investors for a long time. I think, you know, that was a classic case of taxation-driven investments where trees were planted in the wrong locations, wrong species, poorly managed, and it all fell apart. That's not what we're talking about now. We're really talking about more targeted plantation strategy. And the policy settings that can facilitate that include such things as a workable carbon policy. It's frustrating for those who may wish to invest that the Carbon Farming Initiative, the CFI, does not allow a credit for carbon for plantations planted in areas where rainfall is above 600 millimetres. And, you know, frustratingly, that's exactly where trees grow. So, you know, that's a policy which really is, you know, is designed to keep plantations away from, you know, decent farming areas. And, you know, I think trees are nothing other than an agricultural activity if they're planted in plantation. So that would be a good starting point. The CFI carbon policy is quite difficult for many people to get their heads around. That's probably not enough though. I think even with the relaxation of carbon, we need other clearer policy settings. I think around water, I think there is an effort to dictate to farmers what they can plant in forestry, which doesn't apply in other agricultural means. So, you know, if you look at the burden of administration and policy settings around for farmers who may want to plant trees, it's much higher if you're contemplating forestry than it is for just about any other agricultural pursuit. So I mean, I think that would probably be the sort of things that would be a good starting point.
Okay. And Mr Dad, you spoke about, I think it was MIS or MF, I just missed what you said there, but it might be handy for hands-on if you actually say what that means, that those letters.
Sorry, MIS, the Managed Investment Schemes?
Yeah.
That were around perhaps 20 years ago. You know, companies like Great Southern Plantations and others, which was set up to plant a lot of trees and, you know, was in hindsight, a fairly ill-conceived plan that led to a lot of investment collapse at that time.
Okay. Thanks, Mr Dad. Now, my last question before our time runs out. There's clearly a shortage, I think you said a chronic shortage of timber, Mr Dad. Can I just ask, what is the impact? How long will that shortage last, do you envisage? And what is the impact on the New South Wales economy of that shortage? I'll start with Mr Dad and then I'll go with Mr Cost.
It is significant. The estimates from our industry talk about a deficit of 50,000 house frame lots over the next seven or eight years. That is significant. You know, if you annualise that, you can see that that's a fairly significant chunk of our annual construction output. And particularly at a time when imports are becoming difficult, for all the reasons that my colleagues from Bunnings mentioned, we really are, you know, all alone now in terms of providing additional fibre to our own domestic market. So when you consider that a typical house may consume about 20 cubic metres of framing timber, that's worth, when it's delivered as a frame and trust, about $45,000. And you add to that all the other timber that goes into a house and it's far and away the largest component of construction, when you add the bathroom cabinets, the kitchen cabinets, the architraves, the doors, the decking, the flooring, et cetera, et cetera. You're really looking at $70,000 to $80,000 of timber componentry in a typical house. Now, if all of that is difficult to procure, long lead times, you can see the ripple effect as my Bunnings colleagues have mentioned, flowing through to the economy is quite significant.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Beach. From a Bunnings point of view, yeah, I agree, it is very significant. And, you know, I can truly say that those in our business that are responsible for either sourcing product or selling product, and especially around the structural timber and the challenges we've got in that space at the moment, it's a daily occurrence of basically how do we sort of get more timber? So we're sort of very, very focused on supporting our customers right now, but really concerned about the future as well. And as highlighted in some of the references that Mr Dad mentioned around sort of the shortage, long-term shortage in all states around Australia.
Just to add to that, if I may, the shortage that we're in at the moment initially was a supply-driven shortage, but what we've evolved to is more of a demand-driven shortage. And that's, as I mentioned earlier, a global demand issue. So it's not just an Australian issue. So until that demand starts to drop, I think we'll be in a very similar position. If we could get timing, we'd all be very happy and probably sleep a little bit easier at night because it is a really, really challenging position for not only producers, but for the merchants and for the customers who are trying to source the timber. So, you know, we envisage this is going to be with us for a period of time still. But, yeah, we don't have a clear view on exactly when that demand is going to start to drop off.
Thank you. I might throw to Justin Field if he has any questions.
Hi, good, Chair. Thank you and thank you for your attendance today. I wanted to get to that last point, actually. We have heard discussion about shortage, particularly of softwood timbers in part driven because of the fires. But we know that a lot of salvage logging occurred immediately after the fires, which saw substantial additional amounts of softwoods cut and I assume are now available for use by companies like yourself. So I'm just trying to get a sense, how much of the short term, next two to three years of supply is coming from that local supply issue versus those international factors that have also been mentioned? And when do you see that sort of transitioning? Because obviously there'll be a longer term impact from the fire damage on our softwood forests? Potentially with Bunnings, maybe?
Sure. So from what we understand, and we don't have a clear view, Mr Dad's probably best to talk to the salvage logging. But from the suppliers that we work with, our understanding is that the salvage logging in New South Wales is pretty much complete and the majority of that timber has been processed. So what we do know is that when we look at all of the mills that we work with across Australia and in New South Wales specifically, they're all running at or very close to capacity. So there's not additional upside for the majority of mills for them to produce anymore. And they're all working really, really hard on improving efficiencies and increasing yield. So the amount of timber, usable timber or sawn timber they get out of each log. But there is no upside or no significant upside coming in the near future from local production.
That does suggest, if I could, before Mr Dad, you answer, it does suggest that very little of the current supply issues are coming from a shortage of softwood timbers here. It seems that increase in demand is the biggest factor and then the inability to sort of bring some of those export timbers in, oh, sorry, import timbers in, is the bigger factor at the moment.
At the moment, yeah. I believe the mills at Tummit and Tumbarumba aren't running at full capacity because they are, they were the most heavily impacted by the bushfire shortages. So the challenge there is it because of those bushfires, it's not available log to bring them up to full capacity.
Mr Dad, did you have anything to add to that?
I just confirm what Mr Morton has said, Mr Field. He's spot on. The mills around Tummit and Tumbarumba, which was the epicentre of those softwood plantation fires, were working around the clock over the last, or the first 12 months after the fire to salvage that timber. It was a race against time because the timber, once it's dead, deteriorates within about the nine to 12 month timeframe on the stump and can't be used for sawmilling purposes. So that phase has concluded and those mills are now facing the reality of structural shortage in their intake. So if anything, the true supply-demand issues that we've talked about haven't really fully come home to roost yet because we have been running pretty busy as an industry for that period of time. Typically, 25 to 30% of our framing timber is imported. And while there still has been some imports, that's become more difficult. And so your assertions that, you know, perhaps the worst is yet to come is probably correct. And we have been dealing with a demand surge more recently, even though supply domestically has been somewhat normal, perhaps until about now.
Mr Dad, this might be slightly tangential and you may not be able to speak to it, but Boral's recently sold its timber division. So you've sort of gotten out of the hardwood milling sector. I'm just wondering what that says about the status of the industry and as, you know, as an organisation that also wants to access that timber for its other divisions for construction. Can you speak to why you've made that decision?
A little, Mr Field. I mean, some of these decisions are corporate decisions and to do with corporate strategy. And we haven't sold our timber business yet. That is still in process, but it's progressing. Boral's global strategy has shifted to focus on the heavy side of the industry, construction materials, you know, largely quarries, concrete, those sort of things. Boral actually has very little involvement these days in the building products business. In fact, my businesses are some of the last globally in Boral's. In fact, my businesses are some of the last globally in Borrel's network of, or former network of building products businesses. So we're not, we're not actually, other than through cement and concrete and the slabs we pour, we're not actually exposed to, to housing anymore. It's been an evolution of the corporate strategy.
Does that suggest that the materials for building might move as prices for timber increase to your cement, send to your steels as a, as a, as a result of these changes in the timber industry?
Um, Mr. Phil, I, I really couldn't, couldn't comment on, it would be inappropriate for me to also comment on potential price movements in building products. That's probably not something I want to discuss for fear of, you know, breaching A triple C rules around those sort of disclosures.
Thank you, I think my time's expired, thanks Chair.
It has, thank you. I might just start with some questions to yourself, Mr. Corso, Mr. Morton. You spoke about a difficulty to procure, obviously for the building industry. Have you seen a corresponding decline in, in people needing to buy, I guess, other building products that would come after putting the frames up of a house? So that, you know, after, you know, you know, the slab, then, then there's the frame. And then there's a whole lot of obviously other trades and building products that are engaged once that frame is up. I think you probably say the majority of the building trades are engaged after those frames are up. So have you seen a corresponding decline in the need for, for those, those products?
Thanks Chair, Mr. Morton will probably be able to answer a little bit around sort of the supplier based in sourcing. But as I said earlier, we sort of, we do take a lens on construction and our supplier to builders basically from slab to the finishing products. So we sort of look at the different build stages and obviously, as I said earlier, the frame, the frame stage, which we would call, you know, the second part of the build stage is pretty critical. It's a high component of the materials that's supplied in. And any, any delay that would be happening there and sort of alluded to it before around the frame and trust lead times blowing out would impact obviously the, the flow on effect of other build stages. No doubt there's pressure on supply chain throughout the whole of build. And that's not all products, but any delays that happen in sort of the frame stage flows on to other build stages. Specifically about products, look, probably there's some other challenges in products, but it's more about the delay when, when we sort of hold up a project because we can't get a wall frame or a roof truss or a floor cassette out. That puts delays on the project and also throws out the scheduling of the trades on that build stage. So maybe if Mr. Morton wants to add some more to that.
Sure, so activity is still fairly strong in the scheme of things because of the, the demand. So we're finding that the, the biggest challenges have been any other imported products. So from a framing perspective, a lot of engineered timber, so L V L R joists, those sorts of things that are used in floor systems and in, in some structural applications within the frame have been really difficult to procure. There's only one Australian producer over in Western Australia who are doing their best to, to keep everyone going. But the bulk of the engineered timber, for example, is imported and they've been up against the same supply chain issues that, that we spoke about earlier for imported framing and any other imported products. So there's a lot of, you know, sort of appliances and bathroom fixtures and, and those sorts of things that, that do come through imports as opposed to locally produced. And, and some of those have had delays, but sort of the delays are all concurrent, if that makes sense. So, yeah, well, we find that the, the build time has been extended across, across the normal scheduling of a build. But, yeah, but there are delays in, in, in many different areas, if that makes sense.
Yep, sure, I've probably only got time for one more question, so I'll throw it out to both, both stakeholders. Now, we've heard some submissions or seen some submissions around the certification process. And I'm picking up on your comments, Mr. Corso, about the, the certification process. And some of these submissions have called for greater assistance for timber operators to actually meet those certification standards. Do you think that sort of assistance would actually assist in the, the supply of timber? And, and, and improve the supply of timber if, if assistance was maybe provided to smaller operators to meet those certification standards? I'll, I'll start with, I'll, I'll start with Bunnings and then we can go to you.
Sure, I, I might field that one, Mr. Cost. So Bunnings has, has had a really robust timber policy in place for well over a decade where we do hold our suppliers to account around supply chains. We, we look at and making sure that all of our supply chains, all the way back to the forest are sourced sustainably and responsibly. And a part of that is through certification schemes like P E F C and F S C. And they can be quite complex and quite challenging to, to, to meet. But we find, or we feel that they're incredibly important to ensure a sustainable, long-term source of material. And particularly when, when we look at areas that are highly contentious around biodiversity or, or endangered species or other high conservation values. So really, really important that, that it is part of the conversation for, for all suppliers with, you know, from our perspective, from our, our sawmillers and also down to the forest as well. So we have had challenges in the past with smaller suppliers having to work through that process. So anything that, that industry or government can do to help support with education more than anything around the, the benefits of certifying some supply chains would be, would, I'm sure be highly beneficial.
Thank you, and Mr. Dad, do you have anything to add?
I, I agree with Mr. Morton. These rigorous and fairly onerous certification standards are very important. This country is a net importer of timber products, a multi-billion dollar trade deficit in timber products. We cannot produce enough for ourselves, so we're relying on foreign timber. And a lot of that is coming from the tropical forests, tropical hardwood forests. So, you know, we know and we understand the real risks we have in, in sourcing timber from those areas when you look at the devastating deforestation and illegal logging issues. So I think our frontline is rigorous certification standards. I would not want to see those watered down. We, we, we use the P E F C standard, which we find, you know, helpful to our business. So look, I, I can't really comment on how this would apply to small producers, whether this provides a, you know, is, is a constraint to their ability to supply. But I, I'd certainly support the ongoing use of standards as a, a frontline and fence against those other issues.
Okay, thank you, my time has unfortunately expired, so I'll pass to the government.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, welcome gentlemen to today's inquiry. Just wanted to touch on, I think my first question to Mr. Morton, you were talking briefly in one of your answers earlier about global demand. I'm just trying to get my head around obviously the domestic demand and trying to get a sort of a full 360 view of what is happening in the industry because clearly there's lots of factors that are putting the industry under pressure. And yes, we, we know about the devastating impacts of the bushfires and what, what that has done for the industry. But is it fair to say that, that the domestic demand is the, is, is the greatest or highest it's, it's really ever been for, for timber products whilst facing absolute crisis in supply?
Mr. Faraway, yeah, I, I think there's been a number of factors that have really driven demand. Initially, when we first went into COVID and there were, you know, lockdowns and travel restrictions around Australia, no one in the industry, including ourselves, knew what the impact of that would be. But what we found is that people who may not have had the ability to travel were starting to actually invest some of that money that they might have spent on travel in their homes. And so we saw a huge increase in, in D O I activity from our perspective, where customers were, you know, improving their backyards, building decks, renovating homes, performing maintenance and all, all that sort of thing. And then the, the second factor, I guess, is the, the government stimulus which has come through to, to support industry and keep the economy moving was incredibly successful. And we, we believe the take up of, of that stimulus for new home builds was significantly higher than anticipated. And that's, I guess, what we're seeing now with the construction industry is the, the outcomes of that is that we've got a really, really long pipeline of, of work which has been approved and started. And now it's just a matter of, you know, managing that, that product flow through to support those projects as they, they start to come out of the ground.
One of the points that I found interesting in talking to people, I live in Bathurst, so I was talking to people in and around that own trusts and frame companies here and also more broadly in the central west beyond excluding the impacts of the bushfires. And a lot of builders I've spoken to as well, and also when you look at some of the commentary in the media from the builders, peak bodies and associations is that in terms of building new houses in this country, normally the, the, the feedback I've got from industries, normally that one state, you know, is booming and another state is lagging. And what they are saying has been happening over the last, you know, couple of years, in particular the last two or three years, and COVID may have exacerbated this as well, is that every state is seeing a massive housing boom. And when you compound that on top of bushfires, they sort of say this is why we have the problem we have right now. And I suppose from Bunnings' point of view, that's something that you might see across all, like across all states? It's not really confined to just one state?
Yeah, that, that's accurate. So it, it is very rare that we see every state, I guess, in a, in an up cycle or a high cycle that we're currently seeing at the moment. And likewise, it's very, very rare that we actually see globally that all the major timber producers or the timber consumers being sort of America and Europe are the two largest ones, being in a high cycle at the same time that we are. So traditionally what would happen is that if we were in a, a higher building cycle and, and that would generally be two or potentially three states or territories in, with higher levels of activity at once. That then, I guess, puts demand pressure on local production and we would use import product to, to alleviate that. So within two to three months, which is how long it can take for some of those import supply chains to, to ramp up, we see that, that, that pressure's alleviated and then we see that the cycles start to come back down the other side. But, yeah, in this instance, we just haven't had, had that pressure relief because the access to material from overseas due to demand and also shipping constraints has been very, very challenging.
I don't know, did you have anything to add further, Mr. Dad or?
Uh, Mr. Faraway, the only thing I would add to that would be shifting demographics, which is further changing the demand profile. We're seeing since COVID, a lot more people wanting to live in detached dwelling and even in regional centres. So that lends itself more towards timber oriented construction than, than perhaps steel and concrete.
Thank you, just moving on and talking mainly about softwood. Obviously, we have seen developments in and around the Chinese trade embargo. And back on the 17th of this month, we saw the Deputy Premier and Minister responsible for forestry obviously direct the Forestry Corporation to make an additional 270,000 tonnes of timber available into our domestic supply chain and markets over, I think it's the next three years. So just wanted to know from the industry's point of view, how much of a difference, I suppose, in the short term this will make? Because this industry certainly has short, medium and long-term challenges. But if we're just, just focusing for a moment on short term, how much of a difference will that make?
Look, that, that, that is an overwhelmingly positive policy decision, Mr. Faraway. I think anytime we can divert export timber to our domestic manufacturing industry makes sense. Particularly at the moment when we face such shortage and many of those mills are reeling from supply constraints to do with the bushfires. So it's, it's most welcome and the economics works, you know, that's, it's good quality timber. And, and incrementally, it makes a lot of sense. Is it significant? Look, every little bit helps, but I think you'll find that as a percentage of the total supply in the New South Wales market and for the length of time that's been considered before, it's, it's fairly small, but certainly most welcome.
Did anyone from Bunnings have anything to add to or comment on that?
No, nothing, nothing from me.
So just moving on a different, to Mr. Dad, I, I noticed in one of your, I think it might have been your opening statement, you said the industry really wants, and I think you were talking broadly about industry as a whole, really wants stable policy in this, for this industry and, and well, policy stability, I think is the way you described it. Just wanted to expand on that, obviously, in what you think is stable policy for this industry moving forward, especially for an inquiry that is looking at the overall sustainability of this industry.
Thanks, Mr. Faraday. Well, Faraway, well, look, I'd start with wood supply agreements. Industries like ours need an investment horizon. And the nature of our wood supply agreements, as they have been for many years, is that they have fixed tenure. And as you get closer to the end of those wood supply agreements, industries like ours start to look at them and say, we cannot afford to invest in this industry because of our, because of the uncertainty of the, you know, the termination of wood supply agreements. So a mechanism for allowing a, you know, a permanent horizon for investment would be helpful. Secondly, I think particularly since the bushfires, we've had some very mixed interactions with various government departments that have created, you know, real concerns, particularly in our hardwood business where we have supply constraints in our south coast and north coast mills and a, and an unwillingness to return to, you know, normal conditions, even though there are many parts of the forest that have recovered really well since the bushfires. We seem to have this, you know, political carryover from, you know, the initial uncertainty about what supply was out there. There's been a lot of good studies done around the impact of the fires and what we can sustainably harvest. And we still haven't seen a return to normal conditions. I think underlying too, there are other policies, as I mentioned earlier, the carbon policy particularly for plantation investment is, is one. I mean, that, that's probably a, a starting point for the policy stability that I mentioned.
Um, any, anything, any further comment from Bunnings?
No, not for me, I probably can't speak to the same expertise that Mr. Dad can say, but would be very supportive of any government support in this space and the ability to bring key industry stakeholders together to help solve the current challenges.
Well, thank you, that's sort of my end of questioning, so I'll throw it to if any of my government colleagues have any further questions. Looks like not Mr. Chair, so I think government questioning's finished.
Thanks, you only had about a minute and a half left anyway, so.
Good timing.
Good timing. So thank you to the witnesses for spending some time with us and providing some great insights. I don't believe any of you took questions on notice, but if you did, the committee secretary will be in touch with those questions. And I do for shadow, there may be some supplementary questions that members wish to put to you on, on notice. So you may receive some in the coming days. But once again, thank you for your time and we will now have a short break and change over. We will bring in our next witnesses, so I just remind everyone to turn themselves on mute and to stop their video. Good morning, welcome everyone back to our second session of today's hearing into the long-term sustainability and future of the timber and forest products industry. We now have with us Mr. Damian Paul from the Forest Stewardship Council.
Morning.
Mr. James, Mr. James Tyler, morning, Mr. James Tyler from the Australian Sustainable Timbers. And Mr. Simon Dorries, Chief Executive from Responsible Wood.
Good morning.
Welcome, morning, welcome to you all. And can I start in the order that I announced you? Mr. Paul, would you like to state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation?
Uh, yes, good morning, my name's Damian Jonathan Paul. I'm the Chief Executive Officer for the Forest Stewardship Council for Australia and New Zealand, and I'm happy to take an oath. So do you want me to do that by myself?
Yeah, uh, yes, please, yes, yep.
Um, I swear by mighty God that the evidence such as I give to the committee in this case should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Mr. Tyler, you just don't mute, you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Uh, good morning, my name's James Felton Taylor, Director of Australian Sustainable Timbers. I'll do an affirmation, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Mr. Dorries.
Uh, good morning. My name is, uh, Simon James Dorries and I'm quite happy to take an oath. Uh, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. And would any of you like to make a short opening statement? Um, and given our, our time, maybe one to two minutes, starting with you, Mr. Paul?
Um, thanks, Chair. Um, yes, FSC was invited, uh, very late in the process, so we haven't had a chance to make a submission. Um, so if the committee, um, would allow me to make a short opening statement, it's about two pages, I'd be happy to do so.
Yep, sure.
Um, dear committee members, thank you for the opportunity to give evidence at today's important hearing. By way of introduction, my name is Damian Paul. I'm the CEO of the Forest Stewardship Council in Australia and New Zealand. As you may know, FSC is an international not-for-profit organisation that offers a voluntary certification scheme to promote environmentally appropriate, socially beneficial and economically viable forest management. We do this by developing standards for forest management adapted to local circumstances. Globally, FSC certifies in excess of 225 million hectares of forest and close to 50,000 organisations in the supply chain. FSC internationally and in Australia has a unique governance structure that splits our members and directors into three distinct chambers that represent economic, environmental and social interests. To ensure influence is shared equitably between the three chambers, voting is weighted, so each chamber has an equal say. This unique governance model gives FSC a strong social licence to operate as our standards are developed and supported across our diverse membership. While the scope of our standards for forest management in Australia covers natural or native forests and plantations, plantations do make up the bulk of our certified area, while we have a few small holders like Australians Sustainable Timber that harvest in the natural or native forest. It is however important to stress that all organisations can demonstrate conformance with our forest management standard to their independent certification bodies and can get certified. If we move on to the inquiry into the future and long-term sustainability of timber and forest products in industry in New South Wales, I'd like to address sections E and F of the committee's terms of reference. If we start with section F first regarding the role of government, it's abundantly clear when reading through the submissions that the committee has received that there is a lot of concern amongst the social and environmental stakeholders, in particular about current forest management practices in New South Wales native forest industry. Particularly when it comes to the state-owned corporation, Forest Corporation. These concerns primarily relate to insufficient stakeholder consultation, indigenous peoples' rights, management activities that threaten high conservation values, including old growth forests and harvesting in habitats of rare, threatened or endangered species. I'm not here to comment on Forest Corp's management activities, but I'd like to take the opportunity to note that the FSC system and our forest management standard have a strong emphasis on addressing the issues that have been raised, um, uh, in the submissions to the committee. Harvesting in accordance with FSC Australia's Forest Management Standard, which is supported by our social, environmental and economic stakeholders, could help adjust management activities to address the concerns expressed regarding current practices. In relation to section E, which concerns opportunities for timber and forest products industry and timber-dependent communities, we believe that the recognition of and payment for ecosystem services provides a unique opportunity. In 2018, FSC introduced our ecosystem procedures, which incentivises the restoration and conservation of forest ecosystem services by certified forest managers. The procedure focuses on five types of ecosystem services. Certified forest managers can demonstrate and communicate the positive impact of their managed management activities. These five ecosystem services are biodiversity, carbon, water, soil and recreation. These verified positive impacts can, in some cases, facilitate payments for ecosystem services. And in other, and in other enable forest managers to communicate about the positive impact as verified by the, their independent certification body, uh, or we call, or certification bodies or auditors. This adds business value for forest managers who responsibly manages forests and who, and for those who take action to preserve those ecosystems. Take carbon, for example. As we know, forests are very effective means of sequestering carbon. And while Australian companies are not legally required to reduce their carbon emissions, they are voluntarily ramping up investments to offset those carbon emissions. Driven by global shift to an ambitious climate action, Australia's carbon market is surging, surging, and the spot price for carbon credits is expected to more than double by 2030. With the appropriate policy settings, mechanisms and safeguards in place, New South Wales Forest have a significant potential to contribute to Australia's efforts to mitigate greenhouse gas emissions while providing alternative revenue streams that will create local jobs. The other ecosystem services covered by the FSC's ecosystem services procedures like biodiversity, water and soil are more difficult to monetise, but they would present an effective means to communicate positive impacts from forest management in New South Wales. Thank you for the invitation to appear before you today and I'm happy to take the question.
Thank you. I might just throw to Mr. Tyler if you have any, or you have an opening statement that you wish to make.
Uh, yes, I do. Um, actually, my last name is Felton Taylor, uh, just for the record there. Um, Australian Sustainable Timbers operates in the lower north coast and Hunter region of New South Wales. 2007, we achieved FSC, so Forest Stewardship Certification in Native Forest. We were the first company in Australia to achieve that certification in native forest. Uh, we also operate a group scheme where we manage landholders, um, private landholders in that process of, uh, to that FSC certification standard that, um, Damian was just speaking. Uh, as a company, we're vertically integrated. We, uh, conduct forest management, planning, harvesting, milling, and we produce appearance-grade products such as flooring and decking and green sawn timber. Uh, we supply these timbers mainly to domestic residential jobs as well as large commercial projects. Uh, project, the larger commercial projects, examples of those is Sydney Water redevelopment, uh, in Parramatta. Uh, Sydney Metro, where we supplied timber, FSC certified timber, to some of the train stations involved in that project. And more recently to the Marekville Library redevelopment. We believe that within the industry, there's a general confusion between the intrinsic sustainability of trees and the complexity of managing a forest sustainably. Damian touched on the way FSC, uh, goes towards, uh, addressing those issues. We believe forestry can be done, however, it can be done well, however, we need to both focus on what's left behind rather than what's extracted. As foresters, I think we often get a bit carried away with talking about what's coming out rather than what's staying behind. But remember that when we manage decisions we make in the forest, they're with us for 80 to 100 years plus. Forestry, it's complex, it's political, but we need silver culture back in the forest operations, not just rhetoric on the shelves. There's great forest management plans conducted, they largely sit on the shelf, they read really well if you go through them, but it's, uh, often poorly implemented on the ground. We need an innovative and regenerative approach that balances these ecological, economic and so societal interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorries. Did you want to give a statement?
Uh, yes, look, just very briefly, um, first up, uh, just want to confirm that you've received my submission. Thank you. Great. Uh, so just a little bit of background on Responsible Wood. Um, we are an accredited standards development organisation. Uh, our role is to, uh, write, develop, produce the Australian standards for sustainable forest management. Uh, we have two standards in our portfolio, uh, AS 4708 for sustainable forest management and AS 4707 for chain of custody, uh, which provides the mechanisms for tracking and traceability of forest products in the market back to source to verify that they came from a, come from a sustainable managed forest. In regard to the inquiry, um, really have, um, probably three points I'd like to raise. The first one is in regard to item E. Uh, opportunities for the timber and forest products industry, um, and really in, it relates to private native forests. Um, there's no doubt going into the future that well-managed, sustainably managed private native forest uh, is going to be an increasing part of the, the wood basket from which, um, uh, sawmillers will, uh, will draw their resource. Uh, so a couple of points. Um, first one is to, uh, continue to provide support for the New South Wales Local Land Services to establish cost-effective systems for the certification of private native forests. Uh, I understand that the local land services codes, uh, are under review. And as part of that process, uh, if it's practical and possible to align those requirements and regulations with certification standards, it provides a, uh, a much more effective, uh, route, uh, for certification of private native forest. Um, you know, if the laws and regulations are already aligned, uh, much of that could be considered deemed to comply or deemed to satisfy. Uh, and then making the regulatory burden of certification much, much greatly reduced. Uh, the second thing is, um, within the, uh, the resources of government, if it's possible to, uh, run some pilot projects uh, around, uh, the certification of private native forest. Uh, it is, you know, it is, it is done, uh, oftentimes through group schemes. Uh, group schemes do tend to be small. It is very difficult to get a group together and to get it to operate effectively. Uh, so again, um, running some pilot projects to demonstrate to the wider agricultural community that it is possible to have cost-effective certification, um, broaden their market access, uh, but also more importantly, certification improves their management practices, which, uh, to me is, is absolutely essential. And the third matter I would like to raise is, um, item F and the role of government to encourage improvements in forest practices and training. And again, related to private native forestry, um, there's a, a great lack of skill and expertise, um, in, um, land, private native growers, landowners on how to manage their forests more effectively. Um, simple things like, um, you know, improved planning, uh, appropriate thinning, um, better forestry management. Uh, by providing some basic skills, education and training, uh, it will improve, uh, forest health significantly. Uh, also will improve forest productivity and provide a much, uh, a much greater supply of sustainably grown, um, forest products from private native forests. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I will now throw to Mr. Vich.
Uh, uh, thank you, Chair. My first question is to Mr. Dorries. I just want to continue on exploring the certification uh, of private native forests with him. Can I, um, uh, the first question really is around, uh, what, why is it important to have certification for private native forests? That's the first thing. Um, uh, what are the benefits and is it costly to achieve for the operator, for the, the private forest operator?
Absolutely. Well, look, the, um, the first benefit is improved market access. Um, we're seeing increasingly, especially the large, uh, large box, um, you know, uh, building suppliers, for example, Bunnings, uh, in organisations such as Bunnings. The Bunnings, for example, now has a policy, if it's not certified, uh, they'll no longer carry those products, which, uh, effectively excludes private native forestry going into the future from, from many supply chains. So it's not a matter of, uh, you know, is certification an option? Uh, increasingly, it's not so, um, for that wood supply to find a home in the market, it is, it is going to be necessary. And as, uh, as time goes forwards, it will become more importantly. Uh, secondly, um, what are the benefits? Um, first of all, you have improved forest management practices. So again, from private native forest, it will include, it will improve forest health. Uh, well, um, well-managed, uh, forestry will, uh, better manage pest diseases, um, much better planning. Uh, you will have a, a higher skilled, uh, forest manager and there's also the independent audit process. So an independent, uh, expert will then overview those processes. And there's a process of continual improvement where weaknesses are identified, um, they're then, um, correct, through corrective action, they're in, they're improved. Uh, so again, you have benefits for, you have economic benefits, you have, um, uh, forest health benefits, you have productivity benefits. Uh, and you also have social benefits because again, a greater, greater supply of wood products going into small local sawmills. So it's, it's a good thing all around. Does that answer your question?
And that's good. Thanks. And so you spoke about, um, uh, pilot schemes or pilot projects. Um, so clearly native forests are, um, are different in different parts of the state of New South Wales.
Absolutely.
Have you thought, have you thought through, um, Mr. Dorries, just how many private, how many pilot schemes or projects you think would, would really test the certification model, um, uh, and, and advance its cause? So for instance, one in the north, one in the south, one in the west, or is it, is it much more complicated than that?
Look, um, not, not really. I think the, um, the reluctance around certification is often associated with, um, poor perceptions of it. It's perceived as being technically difficult, challenging, too much for a, um, a private landowner to manage. Uh, so it's really about demonstrating that, um, sustainability can actually be very easy and it can be cost-effective and the benefits far outweigh the costs. So the number, it looked, um, probably three or four in, in different types of, of, of forests across the, uh, across the state. So as you said, in the north, in the south and maybe even potentially in the west.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Um, my next other questions, um, I'm guessing, uh, probably for, uh, uh, Mr. Felton Taylor, it's, it's to do with silver culture, silver culture practice. Um, and I'm been reading your submission, which, um, um, I guess what I'd like to ask is what, what do you, what are the, what are the past failings of silver culture practice, uh, in New South Wales? And, um, what do you see as the way forward, uh, to enhance, improve the silver culture, silver culture practice? I, I think you're on mute.
Yep. Thank you. Um, silver culturally, where we've sort of run into a lot of trouble is that a lot of the practices have been, uh, very highly selective. So the, the practice, silver cultural practices haven't actually been, been responsive to the forest that they're being operated in. Um, one of the silver culture methodologies that you hear a lot of in our forest types is silver single tree selection. And whilst this enables you to address the code, um, the code for forestry in New South Wales, it can lead to a process and has led to a process over the years of creaming or high grading where repeatedly the better uh, species and the better and better formed trees are continually removed until you go left with forests that are comprised of poor-form trees and lower grade or lower, um, preferred timber species. It's really important to acknowledge that across New South Wales, we've got great diversity of, of trees, of eucalypts, of timber trees, which is a great strength. Um, but it also, those different species have got different demands and they've got different products. And historically, um, what has happened in the industry is that the pine segment has gone in and, and taken out a large percentage of the market for the lesser preferred species. So the altitude species, the species with lower natural durability. The higher durability timbers, your tallow woods, your white mahogany's, your ironbarks, they can be used externally in those appearance-grade products and that's you, they're, they're your really high-value products. Um, so flooring and decking and cladding. And those lower-grade species, your ash species, your altitude species were traditionally put into the building segment of the market, but now pines moved in and pushed them out on the price point. So that process of high grading, what it does is it's reduced the number of higher, uh, quality trees in the forest. And that's putting pressure back on the harvesting. And that process has led to degradation of, of the forest now. So you've got that issue. You've also got the issue where you've got, uh, forest that's regrown from completely cleared land. So if you go back over 100, 150 years, we cleared a lot of land for agriculture and a lot of those areas have regrown back to what we call regrowth forests. They're often quite species reduced because the, the regeneration process reflected the trees that were left within that environment. So often these were the cattle camps back in the day. Um, so you've got one or two species seeding large tracts of land. Now these forests will regenerate it several, up to several thousand trees per hectare. And if you think about an old growth forest on one And if you think about an old growth forest on one side having 20 to 40 trees to heck to the hectare, there is a process by which the forests go through a thinning process to achieve that state. As the tree gets bigger, it's got more site resources, it needs more nutrient and more water. However, a lot of our species don't self thin very well. So we need a process, active management, active silver culture that actually goes in and helps these forests to move back to a more natural state, which is higher species diversity, better quality stems and more spaced out so that they can actively grow. We've got thousands of hectares in New South Wales, and I mean tens of thousands of hectares in New South Wales of forest that actually isn't actively growing because it's what we call locked up. That inter tree competition is too high. And these species, they don't self thin very well. So they don't take one for the team. So different, once again, different species, you've got different ecological needs and that is reflected in how they need to be managed. Our forestry, our silver culture processes have been a bit, one product, but right across the the spectrum.
Thank you, Mr. Felton Taylor. I'm within the New South Wales Parliament. I've, I know within my own team, I'm referred to as the weed man. I've taken a personal vendetta against weeds, having grown up on a farm. Down my way, I come from Tumit, down my way, post bushfire, the weed regrowth is unbelievable. It is phenomenal. And I don't know how the government agencies are going to try and get on top of it. I noticed from your submission, you you do mention sort of the unregenerated forest post logging operations due to weed infestations such as Lantana. But your post bushfire, is it, is it an imperative that government invests heavily in in weed eradication and management?
I think what's crucial is that, once again, it's that taking that holistic approach. Because obviously, some areas, your forest fires, they're going to be complete stand death and other areas, because obviously, our yuks vary in their tolerances and their ability to withstand fire and obviously the intensity of the fire that goes through. So weed control is definitely going to be crucial. And, you know, managing that process according to what that actual forest area needs, because if you've still got, if it's been a lighter burn, in inverted commas, the trees won't necessarily be, you know, have have suffered death and their natural abilities to come back. Because natural regeneration, where it is effective, is by far the best regeneration process. It's it's fastest if you've got coppice off existing stand of 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 existing trees. But weed control is definitely a major issue, particularly here in the Hunter Low, Lower North Coast region. And I know right up the North Coast, Lantana is, you know, is our biggest bugbear probably.
Okay, thank you. Now, in your opening statement, you mentioned that you've been, I think you said you've been, you've gone through the certification process or you you've been cert, you're certified as a private native forest. Could you just explain, so what was involved in the certification process? Was it costly or prohibitive in any way? And was it worthwhile? Why, what is the benefit of going through that exercise?
I'll start at the back and work forward if that's.
Yeah.
It has been incredibly beneficial for us. It's probably allowed us to maintain our company over that extended period of time. We got certified back in 2007. And at that time, obviously, we were trailblazers. So we were sort of in essence reinventing the wheel. So it was difficult in that sense because there was nothing before in front of us to give us a guidance as to, you know, the process forward. At that point in time, FSC didn't have our own Australian standard. So we're working off an international generic standard. So we had to tailor that document to the Australian context. And at one level, we probably did a policies and procedures manual that's almost robust enough to float us on the stock exchange. However, that's not our intention. It has been incredibly beneficial. It's what's given us access to those large commercial projects. And that is that, I think, given, given us Simon touched on it in terms of, oh, there's a lot of pressures coming from big business now in that drive for sustainability. And that's what's given us access to those large commercial, commercial jobs is having that certification system. There is a cost involved, but we view that cost, it does a number of things. It does a lot of the marketing for us because obviously people come looking for the certification system. And it also gives a third party audit to what we say, like, we're all familiar with the term greenwashing and we all know that it's out there and active within all markets. And by being able to use that FSC stamp, that certification stamp, it means that I can, when someone asks me those questions, I can say, well, look, you can go away and do your own research. You can go and look us up on the website and make sure that our certificate is still current. And that therefore takes, you know, gives me that element of ability to talk and that my words are backed up by somebody else who's looking over my shoulder once a year. That auditing process does come at a cost and it is a substantial cost. But as I said, it underpins our business through driving, driving business.
Now, the independent auditing process, did you say it's annually? And the other, I guess, follow on from that is, do you get to choose who the the auditor is of your certification? Or is that provided to you by the certification body?
For us, we chose the certification body. But who they get to send to us is at the discretion of the auditing body. And that is done annually, depending upon, we're reasonably unusual because we're a forest manager with certification, we're a group scheme manager, and we also have a chain of custody certificate. So if we were just a forest manager, depending upon your scale of operations, your size, you might do one, there's a ratio which they work out, desktop audits versus in field audits. However, because of the complexity of our certification and having sort of those three levels of certification, we tend to have yearly in field audits where they go and visit a number of the properties and look at a number of the different operations. They get to choose which operation they go to audit. We don't get to choose that. They look at what the information that we provide and they go, we want to go here, show us what's going on here. And then we work backwards from there.
Okay, thank you. It's a great case study for certification. And the last question is probably to both Mr. Dories and and Mr. Felton Taylor, but it relates to R and D expenditure in silver culture. Is it, is it sufficient? And if it was, if it was to be some innovative R and D, what would that look like?
Simon, do you want to? You're muted.
Sorry, Mr. Dories, you're just on mute.
Sorry about that. So look, my own personal opinion is, to me, the R and D is more about demonstrating the practical application to the agricultural sector on good forest management, as in how to effectively thin, what's required to improve forest management practices. So I think a lot of the, a lot of the fundamental research is well known, but it's more a matter of applying that knowledge and disseminating it out to to practitioners. I don't know whether, James, you've got a a different opinion?
Oh, look, Simon, I'd agree that the fundamentals behind good silver culture, they're well known. We've got, there's some great, you know, seminal texts out there that really, you know, really address the ecological regeneration needs of eucalypts and the different forest types. You know, state forests over the years have done great research into these. So the research and development, there's definitely research and development that can happen around the FMP, so the forest, the forest management and planning. I think there is a tendency to look towards remote sensing as the holy grail of forest management assessment. And I think there's some severe limitations to its use. I know here in our area, there's vast tracts of forest, which we're growing trees which aren't going to be of any productive use to us in the future, and it concerns me greatly. Species that have regenerated because the wrong silver culture method has been utilized. So you've got an overabundance of species that aren't really adapted to that site. And particularly as we're moving forward, that's presenting all sorts of, it will manifest itself in the physical attributes of those trees when they're milled. So and touching on what Simon said there in terms of showing the benefits that can be gained through certification, as Damian touched on with his submissions, I think the pathway forward for us in native forestry is that we've got to bring the community with us and that, I think, is engagement.
My time is up, so thank you very much. I could, I could keep talking to you all day on this stuff. It's fascinating. So, but thanks, Chair.
Thank you. I'll pass to Mr. Field.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, gentlemen, for your attendance today. Mr. Paul, I'd like to start with you, if I could. Would Forestry Corporation be able to get FSC certification under current logging rules in their existing harvestable area? I think you're on mute, Mr. Paul.
That's the meme of the century, isn't it? There's, there's no barrier to Forest Corp achieving FSC certification other than current practices. And I guess a political will within the organisation and within government for them to pursue it. We've seen other state agencies pursue it. Some have given up and others are continuing to make the changes necessary in in order to be able to meet the FSC standard. But it's more the political will and the the expense and the potential return on investment are the things I think that are, that are stopping Forest Corp actually making that decision.
Well, would logging of core koala habitat be acceptable under an FSC certification?
It's always difficult to talk about specifics, but the FSC certification has a framework to preserve high conservation value areas. That includes endangered and protected species, that includes habitat that those species may encounter. And so it would be up to the individual forest manager to assess the requirements of the standard and ensure that they're meeting those and and protecting that high conservation value area. And if if they can't do it, well, then they have to, you know, move on to these different areas. But our standard's probably unique in that there are not many international FSC standards that have included, for example, old growth forest within the high conservation value framework, as the Australian standard does. And so if if that stand of koalas was in an old growth forest, under our standard, old growth forest is a high conservation value area and can't be harvested for commercial use in timber. So that would be one way of of protecting that area, as an example.
What about areas identified under koala plants of management as core koala habitat may not be old growth, but is recognized core koala habitat? Would that be able to be logged under an FSC certification?
I'm sort of, it's difficult to go in and give you a black and white answer to that. I can certainly have a look at it and come back to you in terms of what the auditors would say. I probably couldn't give you an exact answer unless, James, you've encountered it under the standard.
Look, at this stage, we haven't. What I would say to that question is, it might be helpful, Damian, if you explained the way FSC works in terms of the auditors, FSC, ANZ, and then the certifiers of the certifiers.
If it's okay, gentlemen, I've got very limited time. I'd love to get that on on notice if that's not too much trouble. That would be useful.
No, that's fine.
I might then just direct that one to Mr. Dories because of course, FSC is certified by PFC. So I assume the Sustainable Forest Management Standard is okay with logging that we know occurs in state forests that are identified as core koala habitat.
Look, so under the Australian forestry standard, significant biodiversity values have to be protected or managed. In the case of koalas, there has to be a koala management plan based on good science so that either the the habitat or the koalas are protected and they can show that there's no, no long, no long term detriment to those koala populations.
Given that we've seen a dramatic decline in koala populations, I know partly through fire, but I think even our environmental standards recognize logging as one of the the single biggest, or loss of habitat, the single biggest impact on koala populations. What is the science that is, that you're, I guess, the standard is relying on and PFC is relying on in certifying forestry corporations' activities in known koala habitat?
So Forest Corp will have a koala management plan. It will be based, as I said, based on research, obviously. It will determine where the populations are. Areas where there's particularly high populations would then come in as significant biodiversity values. And in many cases, those areas would not be logged. In other areas, logging will occur, but in such a way so that the koala populations, there's no detriment to them.
I'm Mr. Felton Taylor. You made some comments at the start about, I think it was around the definition of sustainability in in forest management. Obviously, you, you operate quite differently to a standard, you know, PNF operation in that you've got the FSC certification. Can you expand on on what you mean about that? And do you think that the Sustainable Forest Management Standard managed by responsible would can actually ensure sustainable forests?
I can comment upon our operations and I'd probably restrict them to those. One of the key elements of what we do and the way that we do it differently is that the forests are managed over two to three rotational lengths, and that's quite crucial. The way that our particular forests sit within the landscape is very important and we have to show that we've done analysis of where they sit within the landscape, the greater landscapes of the neighbouring properties that we've accommodated for a management plan which enables wildlife to move through our property. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean excluding logging, but it does mean that in those areas that the management operations will be significantly reduced or at least specified towards enabling that movement of 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 animals through the properties. So it's about looking in a holistic sense across the landscape. We do a lot of work around thinning of our forests. Thinning, I've touched on it before, but it's probably one of the crucial elements with the sustainability of our native forest sector moving forward. It helps trees to maintain resilience going into these more extended periods of dryness and drought by simply giving the retained trees more water, more nutrient, which gives them that, just makes them a healthier tree. You can visually assess trees and you can see it all the time in overstocked trees because when trees get stressed in drought, it affects their sap flow. And this makes them more prone to insect attack. And that's one of the first visual assessments of forests under stress. And this obviously has ramifications for their nutrient levels and obviously ramifications for species such as koalas. So these are all the different types of issues that we're doing within our management to address those issues.
Thank you. My time's expired. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. I might just go to Mr. Paul to start off with. We've heard a lot of submissions and a lot of evidence talk about the need to end native forest logging. Is it more of a case, in your opinion, that we just need to, I guess, increase the level of certification across native forest logging and 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 get those certified numbers up as a, as a way of managing the forest better?
Look, as the standard said, it's not our sort of position to say what forests can and can't be logged. Our preference is that a- any forest that we harvest or manage in Australia is under certification and obviously, from my perspective, that it's under FSC certification. I think from our perspective, FSC has broader support around, from the environmental movement. So obviously, from the World Wildlife Fund, the Wilderness Society and others. And that's because they see the FSC standard as delivering on some outcomes that they don't believe occurs with other certification schemes. If harvesting in native forests was to continue, we know that If harvesting in native forests was to continue, we know that there is a, a broader support from the environmental movement that it be done under FSC certification. And I think you'll see that in the Wilderness, the WWF submission. I think that they make that point pretty clear. And we've seen it demonstrated by other environmental movements that they would prefer, if, if harvesting was going to continue, they would prefer that it was done under the FSC system.
Okay. And just pick up on comments from a previous answer you, or it might have been your opening statement. You spoke about ecosystem service procedures. On notice, would you be able to provide the committee with a copy of, of, of those procedures?
Yes, definitely.
Excellent. Thank you. I might just go to Mr. Taylor, sorry, Mr. Felton-Taylor. You mentioned, I think in questions to Mr. Veach, that, or from Mr. Veach, you said there's a lot of seminal texts available around civil culture. Do you think it's a case that we probably need to invest in, I guess, easily accessible and easily digestible education packages for, for forestry workers around, you know, good civil culture practice?
Look, I think that would be really good. They, they do exist and they have surfaced it, surfaced from time to time. What I think this sector struggles with is a really frequent changing of, of focus. So we go from a real push around education. I remember probably 10 years ago, I think, can't remember what the department was called at that stage, in essence DPI or LLS. And we're doing a lot of really good engagement with harvesting crews to, to upskill them around soil, soil-water control issues, civil cultural issues. But for instance, to my knowledge, there's been none done in the last 10 years. So really bringing that information and keeping it forefront, I think would be, would be a great benefit.
Perhaps on notice, are there any good, good examples of educational packages from around the world or even Australia that, that do this well, that you could perhaps table on notice?
Yes, yep, I can do that.
Excellent. Thank you. In your opening statement, you talked about management plans being sort of great on the shelf and, and they read well, but not in practice. So what are some specific things within those plans that you don't believe have been put in to practise well or consistently?
It comes back to that notion of the trees that we leave behind. Forestry for too long has been about, you know, look at these great trees, look at this beautiful timber in my deck or on my floor. You know, contractors, I think really are the meat and the sandwich in this whole industry. They're the ones that are always constantly getting squeezed. They're the ones who are managing weather, they're managing machinery, which is always difficult and it's expensive. And they're the ones who are always being asked to do more for less. But, I'm sorry, I got off the topic there.
That's all right. But it does, it brings, it brings up a point I want to go to next. And it comes from your, your submission and also answers to some of the questions. Because you talked about this self-thinning concept and yeah, and picking up on your comments just then about it's the trees that we leave behind. It, it sounds like you're suggesting we maybe need to alter the mix of logs that we allow to be taken. So it's not just all high grade, there's a mixture. And those incentives you talked about, about giving contractors incentives to harvest poorer grade trees. It, it's, you know, if I was to draw an analogy, it sounds like you, you want to sort of bring it into line with sort of sort of sound animal conservation practices where you actually selectively take out certain, I guess, genetic examples from a species. So you, over time, you strengthen the genetics, you know, of, of that animal, in this case, the tree. Would that, would that be a fair analogy?
Absolutely. And we've got to be careful because if you go back to the science and those seminal texts that I've just mentioned before, it is all in there. It's just that when you're in the bush, it's, it's a volume game. And one of the key physics issues is that if you double the diameter of a cylinder, you cube its volume. As a contractor, you're being paid by volume to remove logs from the forest. So there's this very strong economic argument to take the fattest and the tallest trees in the forest because that's the greatest return for unit of, of effort. So to go from a 30-centimetre tree to a 60-centimetre tree, you've got to cut down three times as many 30-centimetre trees to make up for the same as that 60-centimetre tree that you're leaving there. And that's obviously three times the amount of work. The difference between getting one tree down to, to, of reasonable comparative sizes, a 30-centimetre tree to a 60-centimetre tree is very similar, but obviously they've got to get out of the bush. There's a person doing that and that just slows the whole process down. So there's this perverse incentive to just keep taking the biggest and best trees. So looking at some way that rewards contractors to actually selectively take some of those poorer form trees and leave those better trees behind. That's where the civil culture comes in. That's where that management comes in. That's where certification.
Absolutely.
Can I just pick up on something else you were talking with, along those lines of selectively thinning and, and, oh, sorry, self-thinning? And I've sort of read and heard from people in the industry that each species has an optimum growing ability with regards to its proximity to other trees. Is there anywhere where that data is sort of, I guess, essentially compiled or available for timber operators to, to, to look on and, and say, well, you know, when I'm, when I'm replanting, I, I need to in, ensure, or when I'm managing my forest, I need to ensure that, you know, I'm leaving X amount of space?
There are some basic rules of thumb that work quite well. It depends, there's, it's, the whole issue is always, it's, it's complex. And so therefore it's very difficult to have generalised rules of thumb that apply across the whole area. So they, you look at state forests, they've always broken, you know, the New South Wales into different regions and that tends to reflect some of those. And you could definitely, there could be good regional work done around, you know, producing documentation for the regions, for the regional areas, which reflects the species and the site conditions. Site conditions is quite crucial. You know, here on the coast, mid-north coast, north coast of New South Wales, you'll get species changing as they come from the gullies up to the ridge tops that reflects that nutrient grading and the water gradient. Whereas once you move over the range into the red gum, you know, they tend to be more lower diversity forests, reflecting that more similar sort of topographical. When you move up to the higher altitudes, you, once again, you don't get the same diversity within a localised area, to my knowledge. But I'm pushing out of my area of expertise. Mine's more coastal.
All right. Thank you. Unfortunately, my time's expired, but I do foreshadow some supplementary questions because this has, this has been very interesting and great. Thank you. I'll now throw it to the government. I think I've, Mr. Martin, you've got your hand up?
Thank you Chair. And if I could direct some questions to Mr. Dorries from Responsible Wood. In your submission, page two, it says, "To continue to provide support for the New South Wales Local Land Services to establish cost-effective systems for the certification of private native forests." And that, and you go further to say that works currently being undertaken by LLS. Are you able to just expand a bit more in regard to that work that LLS is undertaking and what you envision going forward?
Okay, so LLS, obviously the, the codes have been under review. One of the outcomes has been a fairly detailed gap analysis between the private native forest codes and the requirements for certification to identify where, obviously where the, where the gaps are. And probably the next part of work or, or piece of work would be to find a way in cooperation with landowners where solutions could be found to fill those gaps. Okay, so there's, so to date, there's been work on the codes and a lot, a piece of alignment work and a gap analysis.
Thank you. The next point in your submission is in regard to support packages for the certification of private native forestry. And I'll quote a bit more for the benefit of other participants here. You're asking, it says, "To showcase the economic and technical viability of certification for private native forestry, it may be necessary to fund pilot projects." That's quite an interesting point. Are you able to elaborate a bit more on, on how that might work and the benefits? I think furthermore, you say, could include pilot projects for group certification?
Absolutely. To make certification economically viable, to a large extent, it depends on area. So the, the larger the area, the, the more cost-effective certification becomes. It's a fairly coarse way of explaining it, but it's fundamentally correct. When it comes to private, private forest growers, if they can establish collaborative groups where a, a group of forest growers were to come together and to operate a combined forest management scheme. With enough scale, it's possible then to bring in professional foresters who will assist with the management planning, with biodiversity assessments, some of the monitoring requirements required by certification. And I suppose the pilot project, it program that I'm thinking is to really provide an incentive for those groups to establish and show that they are actually cost-effective and economically viable.
All righty, thank you. In the closing paragraphs of your submission, it states, and I quote, "There is significant opportunity to increase both the quantity and quality of forest products originating from private native forests through improved education and training." It continues, "Recent research indicates that the opportunities in this area have potential to increase resource availability several folds. A small investment in education has potential to deliver sizable economic benefits." Mr. Dorries, that's a, that's quite a big claim to say it could increase resources several fold. Are you able to expand a bit more on that? That's quite exciting.
Well, as Mr. Felton-Taylor has already explained, civil cultural practices, so appropriate, appropriately, appropriate thinning. You know, the ceasing of the high grading processes where the remaining trees are, are of, are of low quality. So it will improve not only the quality of the trees themselves, but also the productivity. But it's a long-term investment in education. So the decisions that are made around thinning really don't have a economic return for oftentimes many decades. There's been some, some recent work done in South East Queensland looking at this topic and it is, you know, there is a, I'm trying to think of the right word. It is showing that for a small investment, the returns are many, many, many folds greater. One of the challenges, or sorry, one of the challenges is to find a market for the thinning residues, like.
Fair enough. Any of the other witnesses here like to expand on anything raised here?
If I might. Look, I agree with Simon there that the thinning is one of the crucial elements in terms of meeting supply going forward. As I touched on before, there's substantial areas and we're talking tens of thousands of hectares of a forest which is locked up. It's desperate for a thin. The residues market is, is part of that story because obviously it's a costly business, forestry. However, I think we've got to be very careful about looking at the really easy options in terms of the residue market, which is typically seen as the dirty word around wood chip. But there's also substantial opportunities within that thinning area there for quite substantial amount of small log processing into value-added sawn product. And that's an area that requires investment and investment can be difficult to get from banks because they, they love lending to you for houses.
Yeah.
Start talking anything outside of that area, they get a glazy look in their eye pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Paul?
The, the only thing I'd, I'd just add to that from an FSC perspective is that there is a global focus within our organisation on what we would call small or community forests. Traditionally, it's been harder for small growers to access the FSC system and there are group schemes established and James is, is leading one of those to help smaller growers access FSC, which is really about access to market as well. But we are in the middle of trialling a pilot. We're working, proposing to work in, in Northern Australia with an indigenous community, but it's equally applicable to small growers where small growers can get, I, I guess, a reduced effort to commence in the process and it's an evolutionary system over five years to meet the full requirements of FSC. And so that process we expect to be ratified early next year and that will be available to small growers across the country to be able to access the FSC system in a way that's a, a series of milestones, if I can call it that, that gets them up to the full standard over a five-year period. So we're hoping from our perspective that that will give an incentive to private or small growers a way of accessing the FSC system.
All righty. Well, thank you all for your input. Really appreciate it. Chair?
Thank you.
And you, are there any other further questions from the government? No? Well, that concludes our, our time with you today, but I believe you've taken some questions on notice. And there may be some supplementary questions that come to you as well. So the committee secretary will be in touch regarding those. But thank you very much for all your time today. It was really, really insightful. So thank you very much. We'll now go on a short break and we'll bring our new witnesses in. So I just remind everyone to stop their videos and put themselves on mute. So we'll, we'll now start our next session of day two of our inquiry into the long-term sustainability and future of the timber and forest products industry. We now welcome representatives from the CFMEU, starting in the order of how you're appearing on my screen. Ms. Rudman, can you state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation?
Yes, my name is Alison Rudman and I am the New South Wales District Assistant Secretary of CFMEU Manufacturing. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Ms. Musson, I think Sharon is, did you say your name?
My name is Sharon Musson and I am a delegate from the AKD Timber Mill in Tumit plus the New South Wales President of the CMFEU. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Webb?
My name's David Webb. I'm a delegate from AKD Tumit. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Errington?
Yes, my name's Peter Errington. I'm a delegate for the Frames and Trusts in the Wollongong area. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Now, would any of you like to make a short opening statement on behalf of CFMEU?
Yep, my name's David Webb. I'm a delegate from Tumit, AKD Timber and I'm a father of four. The timber supplier you serious from the bushfires, I've seen our mill go from two shifts to one shift, taking skills away from the town and also taking other skills with them. For example, my wife's a midwife at Tumit Hospital. They have a newer hospital opening in a couple of months, but they have limited staff as it is and they fear if more leave, they'll lose services. Also, my daughter is in year 10 and is currently choosing her HSC subjects. With less kids means less subjects. She'd like to be a scientist, but she can't choose things like physics or economics because there wouldn't be enough kids for the class. Over to you, Peter.
Okay, I'm Peter Errington, the delegate for Wollongong Frames and Trusses. Due to the recent timber shortage, production at our trust and frame factory has slowed to approximately 50%, which has resulted in loss of hours and job layoffs. This would also impact the jobs for tradies and so on for the building and finishing of these houses within a number of major housing developments from a distance of 30 minutes to an hour and a half and the far south coast from our from our factory. Onto you, Sam Selton.
Underpinning all of these issues is a lack of coordination, both between government departments and between levels of government. What it means that we hear is particularly from our members in the hardwood sector, they often have a log truck by the side of the road, the EPA on one side, forestry on the other side. And meanwhile, no logs are getting into the local mills and workers are being stood down. Over to you, Sharon.
Thank you. My name is Sharon Musson. I'm a delegate from the AKD Timber Mill in Tumit. I have worked on the timber production line for over twenty four years. This is show and tell. I'd like to show you this is a radiator pine. Millions have been planted since the bushfires burnt out the forest nearby. Now the blackened hills are giving us promise of hope for the future generations. This is the size of the pines when they're planted. But how long will it take before they become mature enough to be harvested to use in the timber industry? Well, at least twenty five to thirty years, depending on the weather, the rain, the sunshine and environment. Well, what will be done to secure the jobs in the waiting time? In the mill where I work, there are many families who have multiple people, members working in our in our mill. So my husband Greg is in the maintenance department, so we both work in the same place. I think of the financial impact of jobs if they are reduced because of the shortage of the timber. And as people sometimes have already um see the uncertainty are leaving now, moving elsewhere. So they're taking their skills and their knowledge with them. The trees have realised how this affects the small towns. We don't want our town to be a ghost town. That's the end of our opening statement. Any questions?
Thank you for that um uh wonderful opening statement. Um, combined all all of you, that was great. Can I? I'll just throw to Mr. Primrose, I think he's leading for questions from the opposition.
Yes, in in the time I've got, I'll also be quite quick and I might begin where where the opening statement ended with Ms. Musson. Um, what should the New South Wales Government do to address both the the short term and long term log supply issues that you mentioned?
Right, the short term, definitely redirect any logs that would be exported out of Australia to go overseas. Keep them in Australia. Let us um process these logs. And also, because they could be from anywhere in New in Australia, um assist with the freight, the long distance hauling of these logs. Um, also optimize the the log sizes. Make sure that the large logs do go to timber mills and the short logs go to where they can be uh chipped or put into panels, cardboard, et cetera. So they're very important. That's a short term. Long term, we need a plan of continuing to plant our our plantations out. And so maybe incentive for even private own, um land owners to put these uh forests in, a plant for the the future. Give them incentives, because even the carbon credits must be something that is appealing on both sides of of the argument as well. So as far as I'm concerned, we've got a long term and a short term, but we and we need to address both. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Can I maybe ask um um Ms. Rudman a similar question, but maybe in relation to wood supply for hardwood mills? Do you want to comment on on some of those issues, please?
Absolutely, thank you. Um, look, underpinning all the issues that we see, particularly in the hardwood sector is a lack of wood supply and this was only made far worse by the fires that we saw in twenty twenty that devastated a lot of these towns. It's not helped by a lack of coordination between the levels of government to make sure that the right wood is going to the right places. We do know um that one of the things that often comes up in the hardwood sector is people want to talk about the environmental impacts. We want to be really clear that we live in these towns. We care about the environment in these towns, but we want to make sure that there is a future for people, not just places and things. There are ways to harness the environmental benefits of the hardwood sector and the benefits that they bring to the building supply chain. And that's why part of what we're calling for is an innovation fund, to make sure that there are good jobs available that are able to do that. Because ultimately, our union has always supported triple bottom line sustainability. That means an industry that is environmentally sustainable, that is socially sustainable and that is also economically sustainable.
Thank you. Um, given the short time, I'll just, if I can go maybe to Mr. Webb. Um, um, you mentioned the issue about problems of raising families in this time of great uncertainty in towns. I mean, well, what are some of those problems and what should happen about um about those uncertainties?
Well, some of the problems like I mentioned, like um like uh people moving away and taking important skills with them, like my wife. Like the hospital needs everyone they can get up there at the moment and um and like she she's a midwife, she likes doing midwife things, but she's been driving all the way to Wagga to do shifts because there's no maternity getting done in Tumit at the moment. So, you know, if the timber industry was to get any worse here, like we'd probably just take our whole family over there to Wagga, which we really don't want to do because we have, you know, we've been here forever.
Are there particular worries you have regarding, you know, for instance, your children and their experiences, say with schools and education? What's happening there in the community?
Yeah, well, well, if the class sizes get smaller, you there's less subjects. You know, we've had the discussion about um whether we should send her to boarding school or not, but to to for a bit of better ed- education, but we would really prefer it if she just stayed in town here.
Okay. Can I go now um then briefly to um Mr. Errington and you? I note that you're in the frame and trust industry. Well, what are the problems occurring at there at the moment and what should happen about it?
Uh, well, at at the moment, uh from from a standing point, when when we get a job, uh it actually has to be quoted first before we actually get the job, which can take anywhere up to, say, three months. And then if we do actually get the job, uh the turnaround time from coming out of the office from being detailed to where it's got to be onsite is approximately three days. And if we haven't got the timber in stock to actually do that job within the three or four days, uh we've were waiting on timber and it takes longer, so then we're not fulfilling our side of the contract to to do that work. Um, we just need a little more consistency in timber supply to make it a little bit easier on us to keep everyone in the industry happy. Um, that's basically all I can say about it. It's just the supply of timber is is our issue.
Okay, how long do I have, Mr. Chair?
Two minutes, Peter.
Two minutes, thank you. Well, look, I'd I'd like to ask any any of the committee, um um, any of the members there, the witnesses. Your recommendation number three is um that the New South Wales Government establish and support a New South Wales Forest Industry Advisory Council. Can you talk about maybe what that, who who would make that up and what it would actually do?
Yes, absolutely. Thanks for that question. Um, the purpose of that is really, it goes to this issue of coordination. We believe that there needs to be one point person who is coordinating between the departments and coordinating between the levels of government and that they need to be advised by a forestry industry advisory council. And that industry advisory council needs to include key stakeholders. It needs to include unions. It needs to include employers. It needs to include those key departments as well that are involved in the process, as well as obviously our key skills bodies like forest works. Um, the purpose of that would be to make sure that we're really capturing the expertise and knowledge and that we're breaking down some of those silos that, I believe you heard about yesterday, that get in the way of a better functioning timber industry. The other thing that would also let us do is make sure that where there's knowledge that we're not drawing on, like indigenous cultural knowledge about how we manage forests, we're able to make sure that that expertise is captured as well.
And I would assume that that um you would be able to draw on other knowledge, for example, local councils in relation to um uh effects of um um bridge, uh rural and regional bridges and problems about log trucks being able to go over them and all of the problems that that would mean.
That would definitely allow us to just stop some of those log jams happening in a really efficient way.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that's enough for me.
Okay, thank you. I'll um throw to Mr. Field.
Well, thank you, Chair, and thank you all for your attendance today and for your submission. Uh, if I can start, I'm not sure who's best to answer this. It might be you, Ms. Rudman. Um, what percentage of CFMEU um uh members are in the hardwood sector versus the softwood sector?
Thanks, Mr. Field. Um, I would have to have a look at the exact figures. Um, but I would say that there are less members in the hardwood sector than the softwood sector in part because of where the work is performed and the history of that work.
If you could take that on notice and come back with any details, that would be um really useful. But I'd be right in making um uh the assumption that it's significantly less. It's a, it's probably quite a small proportion in reality of your members.
As I said, Mr. Field, um I understand that it is less in terms of the level of detail I can provide about that. I will just need to check what our rules allow me to um speak about, but I will certainly take that on notice and respond with what we can.
That would be great. And I asked this earlier of Bunnings and Boral, um who suggested that actually the softmill, uh softwood uh mills were operating at near capacity, possibly up until recently. And in part, this was because of the substantial amount of salvage logging that happened in the twelve months after the fires. Um, could you just comment on, you know, whether or not that's your view? I think I heard someone say that one of the mills was maybe down at fifty percent capacity at the moment. I'm trying to get an understanding of how much this is because of local shortfalls versus increased demand that we know is happening at the moment. And also any um a loss of imported materials or delays in imported materials that have been coming in.
So I think that it's probably a combination of all three. Um, I would note that where we have seen a change in um the working patterns of our members, those changes have happened recently and have coincided with the end of the salvage operations. Um, a lot of that salvage wood was able to be processed for longer than those who were around for the last lot of really major bushfires necessarily expected would be possible. Um, but there definitely is an issue when you look somewhere like from where Dave and where Sharon come, we're close to sixty percent with the resources now not available. There is a real problem there and they are down to that one shift. And obviously, our concern is what that means for both local jobs and local communities that rely on those jobs.
So the very harsh reality is that it is going to take twenty, thirty years for the levels of softwood supply at the domestic level to return in New South Wales. The um the things that you've suggested um um are 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 good, but that won't make the trees grow faster. So what do you see as the stopgap to be able to continue actually operating?
Ms. Musson spoke earlier about some of those opportunities and I think there were really three things that she drew attention to. Um, the first was, of course, making sure that um where there is stuff that can be freighted, where there is stuff that's being grown elsewhere, making sure that that um is able to come to New South Wales. I know some of the reports that I've had from employers is that there is supply, for example, in WA that's not being utilized, that is available to them, but those freight costs are quite expensive. Um, she also spoke about the materials that are currently being exported that can be redirected and I note that some of that has occurred recently. Obviously not at the level that protects the type of jobs that we'd like to see. And then the third thing that we have spoken about is that we've spoken about need to be innovative and to think about what expertise is out there in the industry. Um, because just talking with our delegates, some of them point us to things that they used to do in order to maximize the use of wood around finger. I'm going to use the wrong term, Ms. Musson, feel free to jump in, but um finger connections and that to make sure that some of that smaller wood is able to be fully utilized. I think there's a body of expertise out there that's not being drawn on right now and that's what something like a forestry industry advisory council would allow us to do, actually to bring the people who know how to get the most out of those logs together, clear all the barriers and actually make sure that there's the best chance possible for this industry that way too many towns are reliant on, so we can't afford to let go.
Thank you. I think my time's expired.
It it has. Thank you. Um, I might just start quickly with you, Ms. Rudman, and I might ask you to take this on notice. In your submission, you talked about regulatory creep. Um, on notice, do you come back to us with some examples of some recent regulatory creep within the timber industry that has um actually hurt the industry?
Yes, Chair, I will.
Uh, absolutely. Thank you. And just picking up on Mr. Primrose's questions around the the advisory council. Am I right to assume that you would want that formally legislated, like a statutory body? So it can't be weakened or slowly undermined by ministers of governments of the day?
We would want to see that given as many protections as possible so that we make sure that what's respected is the role of that advisory council and obviously for us, the role of people like Mr. Webb, Mr. Errington, Ms. Musson in bringing their expertise to that table.
Thank you. Um, I might throw to Mr. Errington. As a fellow Wollongong boy, can you talk to us about what impact this is having in terms of pushing out the building of houses within the Lwara and and southwest Sydney and the south coast um because of this shortage? What are the delays in in getting housing built?
Well, a apart from the fact that there's a bit of a boom around the Wollongong area at the moment, like we've got developments at Kembla Grange, Wonga Willie, uh Sussex Inlet and further down the coast. We're on the tail end of the Shell Harbour developments, which is, that's been going on going for a few years now. Uh, the West Dapto, obviously. And uh as I'm saying, as I said earlier, it's that the timeframe that we've got to actually build these frames and ours, I can't speak for any other trust and frame mob, is just that we have not got the stock to actually, uh haven't got the stock on hand to to build these walls and framed or frames and trusses in a time period that we're allowed. Uh, if we can get a little bit uh elusive uh supply, so we have got that little, it's only a small margin of stock that we need. But if we can just get a little bit more, um, it the the impact would would be greatly, it'd be, it'd be great, you know, it's we we can fulfill our contracts and keep a lot of other people happy. Uh.
Yeah, that's. Thank you. Thank you, um, Peter. Um, I might just quickly throw to you, Mr. Webb, as well, and just picking up on Mr. Primrose's comments about schooling. Um, obviously, um, you you don't want to send your your daughter to boarding school. Um, you know, in in a town such as Tumit and other small towns, there is nothing really clever that schools and education departments can do, is it? You know, in terms of moving, you know, moving the kid temporarily to another school, you know, to do that one subject. It's, you know, once that once the numbers drop to a certain level, there is no, there is really nothing clever that can be done. It's purely numbers.
Yeah, yeah, like, I think they had a, they had a thing that you could fill out if enough kids wanted to do the physics. They'd run a class, but you know, I think they've only got a couple of kids that wanted to do it, so.
Yep.
You know, with more kids comes more people that want to do it, I guess.
Yeah, that's right. It's it's a purely purely numbers game. Um, I might just throw back to you, Ms. Rudman, or you, uh, Ms. Musson. Um, in your submission, recommendation five, you you recommend that there be a expert review of hazard reduction regimes across different forest tenures. Um, am I right to assume that you believe that the current hazard reduction regime or how it's how it's been done in the past um wasn't adequate? Um, and there's obviously been a attempt by witnesses to blame increasing bushfires solely on uh on timber operations. Um, I'll just get your comment on on that, those statements by witnesses, but also, you know, are you saying that the the current hazard reduction regime isn't adequate across tenures?
Thanks for that question. Um, I think there are two points that are really key to be clear on. First of all, we don't accept the science. We don't think that the science says the hazard reduction is linked to timber clearing. Um, and we wouldn't accept that point at all. However, we do think part of the problem that we have, particularly in New South Wales, is that a lot of the data on how hazard reduction is performed is really opaque. And we think that there needs to be a really clear and really transparent review of what are those hazard reduction regimes? What data are they based on? And what do we need to be doing to put us in the best possible position for the future?
Thank you. Ms. Musson, do you have anything to add or at all?
Um, no, I wholeheartedly agree with what Alison has just said and anyone that um is in a fire, it's it's the most frightening thing in the world. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Oh, my time's quickly expired. I'll throw to the government. Yeah. Thank you. Oh, my time's quickly expired. I'll throw to the government if they have questions, Mr. Faraway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Apologies, I came in a couple of minutes late because I had a little printer malfunction trying to print some stuff off, but didn't work. But anyway, I just note, and I apologise, so I note that we haven't got Mr. Mathis today, the Oberon delegate. He's obviously, and I'm sorry if I missed this, did I? He was meant to be here today.
There were some technical issues with how many people we could have on the line at once. So Mr. Mathis is happy, I believe you might be looking at doing some Oberon hearings at some point.
Okay, yes.
Looks forward to speaking to him.
No, that's good because I live in Bathurst, so I know a bit about Oberon and know a lot of people that live in Oberon and was just going to ask the CFMEU. If you, maybe, Miss Rubman, if you wanted just to briefly expand on my question around Oberon, I just wanted the CFMEU to highlight on their members' behalf the significant contribution that the forestry industry makes to the Oberon economy and community. But if you wanted to touch on it, it's certainly something that I might expand with Mr. Mathis when we go to Oberon.
Absolutely. I'd welcome the opportunity. For us as a union, just Oberon alone, let alone the smaller mills, once you start to get into Bathurst. Just Oberon alone represents 470 families. That's 470 families who rely on those mills. So you've got two big mills up there. You've got both HPP, which is a joint venture between what was Borrel and now Pentark and AKD. And then you've also got the Borg plant up there as well. Those 470 families really are the economic lifeblood of that town, as you would well know. Everything that exists in that main street, down to what time that servo is open until, is timed around the times of that shift. I've eaten dinner more than once outside of that IGA because I've messed up the timing of that. And we know that those families don't have a lot of other options, that there isn't a lot of other work in Oberon. And that if those mills were to even have to reduce, even if they would have to halve and go down to less shifts, 200 families were to leave, that would have a critical impact, not only on them, but upon every single business that currently operates in Oberon. You also have a number of smaller mills in Bathurst proper. And they're doing really, really critical work, particularly critical work around some of our major infrastructure projects. And so to think that those families might not know what their future looks like is something that we can't stand by and accept.
No, no, thank you. Appreciate that. Just wanted to touch on a point Mr. Arrington, I think gave in a answer before. And in the earlier session with Borrel and Bunnings, I asked a lot of the questions from their industry point of view and happy to hear or expand on this from the answer you gave. And that was around, obviously, the building boom, I think you said, down obviously in the south and the Illawarra. What I've learnt through asking questions in and around the forestry industry and through this inquiry is that the global demand is one thing. Obviously, when we look at the domestic demand, whilst the Illawarra's got a boom, as you said, Mr. Arrington, like the central west does, you know, up and down the east coast of the whole country is obviously booming. From the CFMEU's point of view, are you finding the same thing across all states as well? And that is that the builders' trade and builders' stakeholder organisations would normally say that they would have, one state would be booming whilst another one would be lagging. But they've never seen before every state in the country with a domestic boom in building new houses, like trusses and frames. And then you add obviously the impacts of the bushfires and obviously some other issues within the industry. So my point is, with the CFMEU, are you finding this in other states as well? That there is a huge domestic supply shortage and that's because all states have got a housing boom on at the moment.
At the moment, I can't honestly speak for any other state. I can only speak for our region at the moment. But I can take that on notice and try and get to Alison and get further information through to you. But at the period, our time is struggling with timber for our general area. For the rest of the state and the rest of the other states, I cannot comment on, I'm sorry.
Miss Rubman, you'd probably have more of an idea at least. Firstly, in the state of New South Wales, obviously what the overall supply is in terms of the housing boom. But in your dialogue within the CFMEU, you'd have to be finding that this is almost a nationwide issue, isn't it, as well?
We are seeing that there is this demand nationwide and we're not seeing this demand let up. And we're seeing it really consistently across the board.
Was there any other comments from any of the other participants on that question? Yeah, okay. So just moving on, I also raised with former or earlier witnesses today, in particular around the softwood industry, I just wanted the CFMEU's thoughts on the announcement from the Deputy Premier and Minister that is responsible for the forestry portfolio in New South Wales in around the China trade embargo. And I think it was on the 17th of September, Forestry Corporation directed the 270,000 tonnes of the 270,000 tonnes of timber back into the domestic supply chain for New South Wales. What has that meant for your members and in some of the feedback you've got from members across the state?
We welcome that announcement by the government. Obviously, anything that puts timber back into the supply chain is really critical for jobs. You look particularly around like the Tummin and Tombarumba area where there's been such a massive downturn in what is available to them. This is a very real thing that our members are concerned about. What we would note though is that where we do see exports being redirected, it does need to go hand in hand with a plan about how we're going to actually get those exports to those towns where that processing work can be done. So we see it as a really necessary first step. But it's just that a first step in securing this industry.
Thank you. If there's no other comments or answers to that one, right, that's actually all my questions. So I'll sort of throw over if any of my government colleagues have any questions.
Looks like that's no. So thank you very much to the witnesses for taking the time out of your day and giving us some valuable insight. I believe you have taken quite a few questions on notice. The committee secretary will be in touch with details of how to get them back to us. So once again, thank you very much for your time. We will now break for lunch and be back at 1:15. So remind members to turn their videos off and turn themselves to mute. So welcome back to this afternoon's session of Day Two, Inquiries on Long Term Sustainability and Future of the Timber and Forest Products Industry. We now have with us three academics. Professor Brendan Mackey, Professor Philip Gibbons, and we also have Professor David Lindenmeyer. So in that order, starting with you, Professor Mackey, can you state your full name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation, please?
Yes. If you can just give me a minute to get the affirmation up. So you've got to state my full name and then the affirmation, is that correct?
And your position title.
Do you want me to start with the affirmation or my name?
Name and, sorry, name and position, title, then affirmation.
Okay, my name is Brendan Mackey. I'm a professor and director of the Climate Action Beacon at Griffith University. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Professor Philip Gibbons, can you state your name, position and swear either oath or affirmation?
My name's Philip Gibbons. I'm a professor at the Fennas School of Environment Society at the ANU, Australian National University. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And finally, Professor Lindenmeyer? Can you swear, state your name, position and swear either an oath or affirmation?
Sorry, I was muted there.
No, no worries.
Yes, my name is David Lindenmeyer. I'm a professor of ecology at the Fennas School of Environment and Society. And I swear that the testimony that I give is correct, truthful and in accordance with the law.
Thank you. Would any of you like to make a short opening statement before we proceed to questioning, going in that same order that we took the oath or affirmation? Mr. Mackey, can you just take yourself off mute if you're giving a statement?
Yes, I can give a brief summary statement. My first comment is that if you look at the Australian Bureau of Statistics, they tell us that 88% of Australians' wood supply is sourced from commercial plantations. Yet these are only 1.5% of the total forest area for Australia. In New South Wales, I think it's 86%. So for me, it's clear that the future of the industry, which I agree is the most important one for Australia, resides in plantations and related manufactured wood products. And following from that, I think it's very important that we, when we're talking about the economics of the forest, that we talk about the total economic value of native forests. Based on all their ecosystem services, this includes their role in carbon retention, clean water supply, ecosystem tourism and biodiversity conservation amongst others, which have been found to have a greater aggregate economic value than extracted values alone. In terms of big new external influences for the timber and forest products industry, it is climate change, in terms of both mitigating greenhouse gas emissions and managing the escalating risks of a rapidly changing climate, especially climate forced or attributed worsening fire weather conditions. The IPCC's recent report made it clear that deep and rapid cuts in greenhouse gas emissions are now needed to avoid crossing the 1.5 degree global warming threshold. And a significant contribution to Australia's mitigation efforts can be made from the conservation of native forests. And this will do two things. It avoids emissions from the logging that would otherwise occur and enables ongoing removals of atmospheric CO2 by the natural forest go. A second key mitigation point is that burning forest biomass for energy is not carbon neutral. It is actually highly emissive, mainly due to the lag between the emissions and the regrowth with the resulting accumulating stock of carbon in the atmosphere. Two final quick points. Human induced climate change has already significantly increased dangerous fire weather conditions, which means catastrophic wildfires have become and are projected to be more frequent, severe and of longer duration, especially for South East and Southern Australia. And this has implications for forest management. I think managing the increasing wildfire risk from climate change is best served by target prescribed burning to reduce fuel reduction in the close vicinity of assets. So I think the risk to wood supply that this brings can be most effectively managed by focusing fire management resources and actions at plantations. Thank you, and I'll stop there.
Thank you. Professor Gibbons, did you have an opening statement?
Yeah, thank you. And I apologise, I sent a written version of this late. I apologise for that. You know, Covid's really beared us in terms of teaching and I'm just lying out the train tracks as I go at the moment and really struggling. So, look, a few key points. First, I've got to declare that I'm also an expert advisor to the New South Wales Natural Resources Commission. I'm going to focus on implications on item G of the Terms of Reference, which is environmental impact and sustainability. That's where my expertise lies. It's important to note that timber harvesting in New South Wales forest is cumulative. You know, you've got to look at multiple harvesting events over time and space. And harvesting is associated often with slash burning. And then that is cumulative with climate change, as Brendan Mackey said, and additional wildfires. Now, a big, the key impact in my view of timber harvesting on native wildlife relates to changes in forest structure. And, you know, communities often have problems with timber harvesting because of its impact on old growth forests and hollow dependent fauna. And in a recent large study undertaken for the Natural Resources Commission, 61 native plant species and eight fauna species were sensitive to loss of old growth forests or loss of hollow bearing trees. Okay, very old mature trees in forests. Okay, there's no evidence with regard to fire. There's no evidence that timber harvesting affords communities greater protection from fire than other land tenures. And I'm happy to elaborate upon that later. With the recent 2019, 2025, Forest Corp of New South Wales, you're probably aware of this, predict up to a 30% decline in high quality logs over the next 30 years. And that, the implications of that is that places are under pressure to intensify harvesting in the forest estates still available to them. With climate change, there's a study at the moment that's in draft form that indicates that suggests or predicts that climate change has a negative effect on the majority of fauna that they looked at. And through forecast increases in fire severity and fire frequency will exacerbate the effects of logging fire. Climate change will exacerbate the effects of logging on the loss of those key mature forest structures such as very old trees. And finally, I just, there are four things that I would recommend. And that is that a greater number of hollow bearing trees and potential hollow bearing trees replaced in net, retained in net harvest areas to make forests more resilient to increasing fire frequency and severity. I would say that we need much more long term monitoring. As I said, we cannot make many firm statements about the long term impacts of harvesting in New South Wales on New South Wales wildlife because of the lack of long term monitoring. And I think forests in New South Wales need to be managed on, not on maximum sustainable yield, but at a sustainable yield well below maximum. So there are opportunities for adaptive management and conservative responses to large events like the 2019, 2025s. And finally, I would say that Forest Corp of New South Wales really should be seeking certification from the Forest Stewardship Council. Thank you.
Thank you. David, Professor, do you have any, do you have an opening statement?
Yes, I do. My statement's based on the last 38 years of research on long term work in forests. And I make some really key points. The first one is that we now have definitive evidence based on the analysis of the 2019, 2020 fires, that logged forests always burn at higher severity than intact forests. And that's irrespective of fire weather. So we have analysed the fire footprint across New South Wales and Victoria. And the data are unequivocal. In fact, there are times when log forests at low climatic conditions, that's low fire weather, burn at greater severity than unlogged forests at extreme fire conditions. So it's, the data are compelling, but under all fire conditions, log forests burns at higher severity. Now, that paper has just been resubmitted, publication in one of the world's leni journals. It's a pretty serious statement about the fire burden that is occurring in native forests in New South Wales and in Victoria. The other thing that's really important is that many areas of forest are now burning repeatedly. And so the effect of recurrent fire is that some kinds of forest will simply be unable to grow old enough to grow sawlogs. So this is particularly in the high value ash forests, where recurrent fire will essentially lead to an 80% chance that the forest will burn before they get old enough to produce sawlogs. The other thing that's really important is that it's often touted that thinning forests will reduce fire severity. We've now done the empirical analysis of that, both in the 2009 fires in Victoria and the 2019, 20 fires in New South Wales and Victoria. And thinning either has limited effect or it actually increases the probability of high severity fire. The third thing that, the fourth thing that's really important here is that post-fire logging, so this is logging in burnt areas, is the most damaging form of logging in terms of its impacts on soils, its impacts on biota, its impacts on aquatic ecosystems. So there's a vast literature on that, that, uh, that we've reviewed. The fourth thing, the fifth thing that I think is really important is to look at the economics of what's been happening, particularly in southern New South Wales. And when you look at the, the, the forest industry, it's very important to break it apart. It's really two industries. It's a native forest sector and it's a plantation sector. And the latest economic analysis that I've seen indicates that the hardwood division of, of, uh, the forestry corporation is a marginal entity at best and is often loss-making. Whereas the plantation division is actually quite productive and, and economically sound. So that, the, the, if you do the analysis of this, and I've seen the analysis that's been done by others, it's, there, there is a strong benefit cost ratio of actually taking, uh, the forestry corporation out of native forests, particularly when you think about the carbon abatement potential. So the carbon abatement potential is more than a million tonnes of carbon abatement per year. The analysis that I've seen indicates that that's about five times bigger than the next carbon abatement project currently in New South Wales. So you can see that this is potentially a very important economic stream, an income stream for the state of New South Wales by changing the way that native forests are looked at. So in summary, there are issues to do with fire severity, there are issues to do with thinning, there's issues to do with, with the economics of the industry itself, uh, and the benefit cost ratios from economic analysis that's done in this space. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I'll throw to the opposition, I believe it's Mr. Beach.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Chair. Uh, I, I might actually start with, with Professor Lindemeyer. Uh, that research you were just talking about, pretty fascinating. Can I, I, I live in, uh, Tumit, so, uh, pretty, uh, pretty aware of the fires that occurred there last year. Can I, um, one of the issues I have is that particularly in the, uh, harvested, um, forests, it just appears that the weeds grow back a lot quicker, uh, and with a great deal more density, with a great deal of density, and therefore they add to the fuel load. Did your research pick up anything, anything all around, uh, the contributing factor of weeds to the fuel load in these forests?
Uh, no, we haven't. I've worked in the Tumit plantation since nineteen ninety-four, including the Nanagro plantat- plantations to the north. And, and I know that the seventy thousand hectares of pines in the Tumit area also comes with sixty-nine thousand hectares of blackberries. So, we, we haven't looked at the fuel load issue associated with, with blackberries. But what we do know is that most plantations are relatively young. And that's when we see the highest fire severity patterns in, in native forests, but also in plantations. Now, the advantage of plantations is that you can get a crop much more quickly from a plantation. Uh, the first thinning's in about fourteen or fifteen years, the second one about twenty, the final clear fell is about twenty-five, twenty-four to twenty-five. So you can get three crops in that time of, of different outcomes. Whereas in a native forest, if you're going to grow sawlogs, basically your forest needs to be about eighty years plus to produce a sawlog. So there, the, the other advantage of plantations is that plantations, if well managed, are more defendable, uh, in terms of high severity fire relative to, to, uh, native forests. So that the plantations are more lucrative in terms of employment, in terms of return on investment, more defendable and, and better able to be better managed in that context, in my opinion.
Uh, thank you. And just for record, I shored it in Nanagro many, many years ago, uh, before it became pine forest. Um, can I, I want to move on to, and I, sorry, I think it's, um, let me just very quickly check here. Professor Gibbons, uh, and your submission, um, you suggest at the very end that Forest Corp of New South Wales should seek FSC certification, Forest Stewardship Council certification of its operations in native forests. Can you, uh, detail to the committee just what the advantages you see would be of such an action?
Well, the forest, uh, Forest Stewardship Council is the gold standard for, um, uh, cer- certification of timber industry globally. Uh, Wesfarmers, uh, have said that they won't, uh, take through bunnings, won't take, uh, timber in disputed forests that is not FSC, uh, approved. So they, they see that as gold standard. And New South Wales, Forest Corp of New South Wales doesn't have FSC certification, as I said. And it, you know, it, it really does assist with, you know, a social license for timber harvesting in native forests in New South Wales. So, um, I don't know if there's anything else I could add there. David, Professor Lindemeyer has had some experience with FSC certification as well.
Yeah, I'd be keen to hear Professor Lindemeyer's views.
Yeah, it's certainly, certainly it, uh, the way that FSC is structured through, uh, the environment chamber and the economics chamber and the social chamber aims to create, uh, more social license to operate. And I know that many parties are now looking at certification of plantations because there are ways to design plantations so that they're, that, that they meet other, other, um, values. Victoria has, and Tasmania have both had enormous problems with FSC certification because there are deep underlying problems in both jurisdictions. Um, one of the limitations of FSC is it doesn't take into account, uh, carbon emissions and climate change as, as part of its structure at the moment. So there's some work to be done in that space. I, I would say that the real future in New South Wales, moving largely towards the plantation sector would be to, to think about the management of those plantations so that they would fit with FSC certification.
Uh, thank you, thank you. Um, earlier today, uh, we heard some, in my view, fascinating, um, evidence regarding silver culture practice and, uh, what has been the failings, uh, in New South Wales around silver culture practice. But going forward, um, cha- what the need to change, uh, the management, uh, particularly in our, our state forests. Do you agree that there's been failings in the past with the silver culture practice in New South Wales and we, we need to change? I'll probably start with, um, maybe Professor Gibbons and then, uh, each of the other witnesses.
Well, look, there's many, there's many components to silver cultural practice, but you know, from a wildlife perspective, and this was outlined in my, um, uh, statement, it, they, what's happened with silver culture practice in New South Wales, for example, um, one of the conditions under the, the, you know, coastal integrated forest operation approval, uh, is that, you know, uh, is that hollow bearing trees, which is this key habitat resource for around about a hundred species in New South Wales, is being driven down in the net harvest area in New South Wales forest. So, um, so the current conditions only see five to eight percent of the net harvested area, um, in which hollow bearing trees are retained. They are retained outside that area, but there's no replacement once they are lost. So our work has shown that we, we're seeing a, a major, a decline in this critical habitat structure across much of New South Wales forest. And I don't think that, that is an indictment on silver culture in that it's not managing those forests in a way that's consistent with, with the requirements of a, a, a whole range of fauna in those forests. So in that sense, I think it's a failure. Um, I don't know if there's anything specific about New South Wales silver culture practice that, uh, that you want me to refer to.
Now, that's, I'm just keen to get people's views on, uh, on, on that, that aspect of, um, the evidence we've heard and I'd like to test it. So Mike, Professor Mackey, maybe if you've got anything to, to, to add or say about this?
Well, I think it, it, it does have to change for the same reason that everything we do in terms of land and forest management has to change, because the climate has changed. And one of the main respects in which it's changed has been the increase in dangerous fire weather conditions. Uh, and, and this, there, there's been a significant increase in dangerous fire weather conditions since, actually since the nineteen seventies. And we all know this, that's why the nineteen nineties, we got a, we got an extra fire danger warning of catastrophic fires. That's because the Forest Fire Danger Index was calibrated against the most intense fires of the time back in the nineteen seventies. And it went from zero to a hundred. And in, and in the nineteen nineties, you started to get values above a hundred. We know from our research, from the Black Summer fires, that we were getting, there were, there were days where there were values over, uh, over a hundred and fifty. So, so, so one reason why silver culture practices have to change is because the climate's changed. Uh, and the increase in the frequency. So, so we've experienced, we've had one point, one degree of global warming. Climate change isn't something for the future. We've had one point, one degree of global warming since pre-industrial levels. We've seen, depending where you are in Australia, five to twenty-five days more, uh, a, a year increase in, in dangerous fire weather conditions. That's projected to continue. So, uh, that has an awful lot of implications for many aspects of, of forest management and, and silver culture. Um, but it, including its effect on, on models of wood supply and, and the feedback to, to silver cultural practices. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I head over to my colleague, uh, Mr. Primrose, Professor Lindemeyer, do you have a, uh, could you add to this?
Yes, I can. Uh, one of the, I agree totally with what Phil was saying about, uh, the large old tree component of forest, which is critical for many reasons, including the ability of forests to regenerate naturally through, um, through seed supply and natural regeneration. But let's park that to one side. One of the things that we've seen from silver culture over the last sixty years in southern New South Wales and in northeastern Victoria is a marked change in the composition of the forest. So in southern New South Wales, we see a shift towards a tree species called silvertop ash. Silvertop ash is essentially a fireweed. So after intensive harvesting operations, such as in the Eden Woodchip concession area, silvertop ash comes up in, en masse. Now, silvertop ash, uh, responds strongly to fire, so it's benefiting from fire. But the, the flip side is, is it's not only adding to the flammability of stands, and we now have data on this, but silvertop ash is edible as a tree species for animals like koalas and greater gliders. So we see extensive areas of forests that have now had their tree species composition radically altered. Now are largely glider and koala deserts. And so the compositional change of the forests through repeated silver, silver culture is a real problem. So silvertop ash is a tree species that's used extensively in the woodchip industry. But, but it really changes the forest in ways which are highly detrimental to wildlife. So not only are we seeing less in terms of the hollow use for animals, but we're now seeing the, the nutrient landscape, if we want to call that, also dramatically changed. So that's one of the reasons why the koala has declined so dramatically in southern New South Wales and in northeastern Victoria. But now the greater glider is declining even faster in many places as well. So silver culture is going to have to change to, to, um, to take into account not only the change in climate, as Brendan was talking about, the change in fire regimes that we've, we've talked about, but also the need to support the habitat requirements of some of these threatened species.
Thank you. Peter?
Uh, how long do I have, Chair? I think you're on mute. Sorry.
Uh, sorry, Peter, four minutes.
Four minutes? Okay, well, I'll, I'll ask one question then and ask it, address it to all, any, and all witnesses who'd like to answer it. Yesterday in, um, we heard from Timber New South Wales, and I'll just read out one of their recommendations on page one hundred and thirty-five. And it states, and I quote, "With eighty-eight percent of public forested land reserved, um, from native timber harvesting, operations have become concentrated in some local areas. This has opened the government to criticism from local communities that it is supporting the intensification of harvesting. Allowing timber harvesting to have a lighter touch across a larger area by integrating forestry with the management of forests more generally, along with clear communication campaigns would address many genuine community concerns. Such an approach could also help protect the forest from future catastrophic bushfires. For this to occur, the New South Wales government needs to discard its siloed approach to forest management and to embrace tenure neutral principles." Um, I'm just wondering if anyone would like to comment on that, please?
Uh, I'm happy to talk about some of those, those issues. I, I heard, I heard the same kinds of discussions uh, in the nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties regarding the Eden Woodchip concession area. And, and what happened was that at various times, up to ninety-three percent of everything that was cut in the Eden Woodchip concession area went out through the Eden port as small pieces of wood to, to Japan. And that led to what I said before, the changes in the, in the silver cultural change in the system, which changed the composition of the forest and changed the, um, and, and populations of hollow trees, et cetera. So what tends to happen is that the industry is quite distorted. So to, to, uh, harvest one or two sawlogs, you end up having to cut down ten or twenty trees to, to get those one or two sawlogs. So the, the process of spreading the industry out over larger areas, first of all, isn't going to make it any more economic. It's already marginally economic at best at the moment. It's, and, and I, the, the scientific data totally refutes this idea that, that logging will reduce fire risk. Empirical data shows quite conclusively now that logged forests burn at higher severity. So I wish it wasn't that way, but that's what the data show.
Thank you. Um, Professor McKay or Professor Gibbons, do you have any response?
Can I just add to that, uh, that, um, you, we did some work after Black Saturday in Victoria and found there was no, there was no association between timber harvesting in adjacent forests afforded no protection to houses during bushfires. So, um, there was no, it, I, I, this, I'm, I'm across the fire literature pretty well in this space and, and there's no evidence that timber harvesting affords greater protection to, uh, houses during bushfires. And during the two thousand and nineteen and twenty fires, you know, forty-two percent of state forests, so managed for timber production, were, were burnt during those fires. And I think it was thirty-seven percent of national parks. So again, there's no evidence to indicate that state forests managed for timber production burn any less than other tenures of forest. So, um, and if you look at, you know, things like, uh, prescribed burning or hazard reduction burning over time, uh, it hasn't declined over time in New South Wales with changes in tenure. So I just, I, I, I'm just, I, I don't think some of those statements when it comes to fire are, are based on evidence.
And Professor McKay?
Yeah, I, I would just, uh, I agree with what my two colleagues have said. I would just add, add to that, getting back to an earlier point I made in my introduction about looking at the total economic value of native forests. And as David pointed out, having a more geographically expansive spread logging operation is more expensive. The cost goes up to a unit wood. Uh, but also it, 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 there are other costs that need to be taken into account because there, there are trade-offs with other forest values, uh, in, including carbon retention and, and water quality and, and biodiversity habitat. So again, this is why I think we, we, we need to look at the total economic value of our native forests and, and the trade-off between different, um, management strategies.
Thank you. I think that's my four minutes, Chair.
It, it is. I'll pass to Mr. Field.
Well, thank you, Chair, and thank you all for, um, your attendance today and submissions. Um, firstly, to Professor Gibbons and, um, and Lindemeyer, I might just ask about your recommendation around FSC certification. Firstly, would you recommend that forestry corporation, um, seek FSC certification, but also that private native forestry operations in New South Wales be regulated to a level that if they were able to or required to achieve FSC certification as well?
I, I would say yes to that. I, I don't know if David's got anything to add, but you know, FSC certification, you know, covers both native and non-native timber harvesting. And, and there are potential negative impacts on the environment from the plantation sector as well. So I think both are important.
Yeah, I, I would like to see a lift in this, in the standard and the regulation associated both with public native forests, but also private native forests. I think, I think you need to, to level the playing field there for, for both. But I would add that I think it's important for the plantation sector to, to also have to lift its game. You know, the issue of weeds was one that was talked about before, that, that is a critical one that the plantation sector needs to deal with. But there are ways of designing plantations to reduce fire risk, to reduce problems with weeds. And, and I think the plantation sector should have to make, make those requirements to lift its game as well.
I'll just focus in on, sorry, Professor Gibbons, you can answer that more, but I'll just add something else. Um, uh, and focusing on the, and Um, uh, and focusing on the, and public native forests now. In your opinion, what would need to change to the CFIWA, uh, to enable forestry corporations' practices to achieve FSC certification?
Well, uh, you know, the CFIWA is a, you know, like a several hundred page document. So it's, um, in, in terms of the area I focused on in my, in the forest structure area, uh, I've made a, a specific point in my, in my submission that, uh, the, the net forest, net harvested area in native forests in New South Wales, the, the CFIWA condition on tree retention's got to change to enable recruitment of mature trees into wood production forests. Now, for that to be achieved, part of the reason that that condition has been relaxed over time is because uh, there's been increasing pressure to intensify harvesting from, um, the net, net harvest area in, uh, in New South Wales. And this comes back to a, a paradigm or, or about calculating maximum sustainable yield. So, you know, if timber harvesting to, to, to continue in New South Wales native forests, that the, the, the yield or the, the sustainable yield's got to be well below maximum so that, um, so that things like, uh, structure can be incorporated into, into, into forests, uh, forest management. And so that, you know, other events like wildfires, uh, climate change that are, um, difficult to predict for can be, can be, um, uh, can be accommodated in forest management, uh, unlike the current case where, you know, thirty percent reduction in timber means that, uh, timber yields over the next thirty years means that there will be an intensification of of those areas that are still available for harvesting or still suitable for harvesting. So that, that's a problem. So, look, um, so this is one aspect of, uh, the, the, the tree retention prescription within, condition within the IFOA must change, uh, but there are many other things in there. And I think the other one is, um, is, is more around the regional forest agreement and that's a sustainable yield.
So just to that point of maximum sustainable yield, I mean, the forestry corporation has done a sustainable yield review since the twenty nineteen, twenty fires. You'll be aware of it, um, being an expert advisor to the NRC, no doubt. That was identified a thirty percent reduction on the south coast, four percent on the north coast. But it was largely desktop. They, they weren't able to do a lot of fieldwork. How much stock should we put in that? And if you were going to put a margin of error on us, um, so if we weren't going to go to maximum, if we were going to go to something else that gave us some, uh, airspace here, what, what should it be? What's the reduction in yield that we're talking about?
Yeah, and they, they make the point in that document, uh, that, uh, because of uncertainty around their, their modeling, that, um, that it's a, it's a preliminary review and it's an estimate only. I, I, uh, look, uh, you know, in a recent study I did, I talked to the person who does their modeling and, uh, because I was asked some information on, uh, yeah, the, the rate, the growth, the growth, uh, models for New South Wales timber species. And, um, he, he was pretty upfront about, uh, some of the problems with, uh, with that, that modeling. So I don't know what the margin of error is, but there would be a considerable margin of error. And, uh, and unfortunately, if you work above the sustainable yield, you end up, uh, this happened in East, East Gippsland where I used to work in Victoria. You know, that, they cut above sustainable yield for a long time and the, the, it ended up the local industry was completely utterly annihilated when they had to move back to sustainable yield because they had to reduce their cut so much over a short period of time. So it, it doesn't, um, it doesn't help anyone, uh, to, to cut at a, uh, at a maximum sustainable yield. Uh, for all the reasons for, because of uncertainty in the modeling, because of difficulties in things like wildfire, because of, um, you know, as we get more knowledge about, uh, impacts on threatened species, for instance. So, look, further, further investment in better modeling of the resource, um, or yield calculations for the resource would be a, 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 a really good thing for New South Wales forests.
Um, I might, uh, now, Professor Mackey might address this to you. Yesterday, we heard evidence from Timber New South Wales. Um, and basically this was the quote, "The science suggests sustainable managed native forests is best for the environment, best for carbon storage and best for climate change." I, I take from what they said that they were talking about, um, managed in terms of managed with forestry. Um, can, can you just speak to, you know, your, your view of what the science says around the role of forest management when it comes to uh, carbon storage and climate response, please?
Uh, yes. So I, I assume they're talking about the main focus of this discussion, which is managing native forests for commodity production. So, uh, you know, lo- logging generates CO2 emissions and, uh, it, it's, it's, uh, you know, reduces the accumulated stock of carbon, you know, in a forest ecosystem. Most of the carbon in a forest ecosystem that's in the living biomass is, is, is in the woody stems, branches and roots of big old trees. So where, so there's a few implications there. When you, uh, put a forest under commodity production management, you reduce somewhere between thirty to seventy percent, maybe thirty to, in, in the forest we're talking about is probably thirty to fifty percent, you're reducing by thirty to fifty percent the standing stock of carbon. Of course, you're keeping, as we've heard structurally, you're keeping the forest in a young regrowth phase. And most of the carbon, like living biomass carbon is stored in, in big old trees. And then you're not allowing them to grow. So the mitigation value of the native forest is reduced by thirty to fifty percent from, from logging. Now, you, you can say, okay, what about the carbon that's stored in, in, in wood products? Well, uh, only a small percent, less than ten percent, ten percent if we're being generous, of, of the carbon that's in a tree in a forest and ends up in any kind of long, long-lived product. And even then, we're not talking about long. We're talking about uh, in the, in the case of public paper, public paper, it's years and, and with manufactured wood products, it, it might be a decade. So, and essentially, it's, it's, it's a delayed pulse. So if you think about the counterfactual, the opposite of doing that, you know, conservation of management of forests, there are two mitigation benefits. First of all, you avoid the human emissions from logging. So that's an avoided emission. And, and that, and, and that means all the ongoing forest growth, um, that goes into, that goes into accumulating the, the stock of carbon. So you get an avoided emission plus you get this growing stock of carbon. So I would say the science does not support that statement that, that you quoted. And in, and in fact, the opposite is the case.
Thank you. My time has expired. Professor Lyndon Meyer, I might put some questions on notice to you, in particular around your research on thinning that you mentioned earlier. I'm sorry I didn't get to you.
Yeah, I, I, just to briefly, also to follow up on Brendan's perspective there, the, the economic analysis that, that I've seen in recent times indicates that you're looking at a very large amount of carbon abatement, which is potentially worth a very large amount of money, significantly greater return to the state, uh, the state economic bottom line than from native forest harvesting, from carbon abatement, uh, severalfold greater. So in the, you know, if the, the numbers that I'm, I'm, um, looking at at the moment suggests that, um, the, the native forest sector in Southern New South Wales at best returns around, returned around four hundred thousand dollars profit two thousand nineteen, twenty. Um, the, the, the softwood was closer to sixty million dollars and your carbon abatement under even a, a bottom level price would be at least forty times to fifty times what the hardwood division was worth. So, you know, if you were making economic decisions about what the best thing to do was with forests, you wouldn't be doing what you're doing now in native forests.
Thank you very much, Professor Lyndon Meyer. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Um, I might start with you, Professor Mackey. In your submission, you talked about that it's fuel dryness rather than load that is the critical factor. Do we actually have technical capabilities to monitor fuel dryness on a, on a broad scale?
Yeah, yes, we do. And, and, and this is with the advent of, um, remotely sensed, or time series remotely sensed data. For example, there's a satellite called Senat, Senatell Two. Uh, there's also a Japanese one. And, uh, now just have to excuse me one minute. My, I've got my computer attached to a monitor and it's about to turn itself off. Just have to reboot the screen. Otherwise I'll lose, I'll lose contact. Just bear with me for a second.
While you're, while you're working with that, i- is that, is that techni- yeah, is that technology widely available or are we utilizing it to its, to its full potential?
It, it is, it is certainly, uh, it, 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 it is, um, a well-developed method using this. So it's time series of satellite data and there's particular algorithms which are able to get, um, um, measurements that are correlated with, with, with fuel dryness. Um, there are, we, we have experts at University of Wollongong and, and, um, other universities in Australia, uh, who have been using this and has been widely, widely published. And, and they did receive quite a lot of attention about that research, you know, following the fires. Because some of the early scientific papers that came out, um, were able to point their finger at that as being one of the critical factors because of this research that the Australian academic community has been doing on this for a number of years now. I think the question, the other part of your question is, has this been operationalized so that it can be used as part of, um, the, um, uh, emergency planning and, and, and emergency management? I think the answer's no. But my understanding is there are, uh, that, that is well understood. And, and, and there's certainly one or more collaborative research centers and other initiatives going on. I think the Fed, the new federal agency, um, et cetera, where, you know, this, this is part of the toolkit that people are, are looking at. But yes, we have the technical capability and, and it's certainly ready to be, to be, um, drawn upon and, and operationalized as part of decision support for emergency planning management.
Okay. I might, uh, go to Professor Lyndon Meyer. In some of the research, um, that you've done and you saw it in your submission, you, you, you talk about, um, stand age and it's linked to severity of fires. Did any of that research talk about fuel load or the density of, of thick undergrowth and that's, and, and it's a, it's, uh, contribution to severe fires at all?
Uh, yes, some of the more recent work has looked at the relationship between the structure of the vegetation and the age of the forest and the susceptibility to, to fire. One of the most important elements of this story is that you need to look at different kinds of fire in this space. And some other authors working in this space have, have made the mistake of combining what's called canopy scorch, which can often be a fairly cool, fairly slow-moving fire that, that burns at a flame height that touches the canopy. That's a very different kind of fire to crown burn. Crown burn actually consumes whole trees, including the canopy. And you need to, you need to break those two kinds of fire apart to look at them carefully because crown fire is the one that kills people. It's the one that damages property and is the one that has the highest fire severity. And when we look at crown burn, we see, as I said in my opening statements, that logged forests always burn at a higher severity by a crown burn or crown fire relative to intact forests. But the important part of this is that it's not what we call a linear relationship. It's, it's actually a nonlinear relationship. So it's hump shaped. So when a forest is first logged and then regenerated, there's a very low probability that it's going to burn. And then there's a very steep increase in the probability of crown fire for, for the next forty years. And that reaches up to seven times greater probability than a very young forest. And as the forest ages even further, that risk starts to decline again. So that the lowest severity fires are actually in the oldest forests. And we saw that in two thousand and nine and we've seen it again in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. So it's not only fueled loads that, and, and dryness that's important. It's actually also the structure of the vegetation that can carry the fire from the ground level up into the canopy and create those very extreme kinds of fires that we did indeed see in parts of southeastern New South Wales in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. So
Yeah, I've, I've, I've only got about two minutes left and I've, I've got a question probably for all of you. Um, we heard evidence, um, during this morning session about the idea about providing incentives to harvest, um, what they called lower quality trees as opposed to focusing solely on high-grade trees. And that would be an option in, I guess, assisting in this mix of tree classes and in improving the overall quality of a forest. I just wanted to get, um, your opinions o- o- on, on such a proposal. Just maybe starting with you or staying with you, Mr. Lyndon Meyer, then we'll go back to Mr. Mackey and then Mr. Gibbons.
I, I would see that process being quite a negative one. So if you, if you're talking about harvesting low-quality trees, then where that, where that wood is going to go is into woodchips. And so it's going to be a high-volume, low-value, low-return on investment for, for the state. So we already know that the hardwood sector is essentially, um, contributing very little economically and often hemorrhaging money. We see that in Victoria and Western Australia where it's a major loss maker. It's likely to be the same in New South Wales. I can also see, uh, problems with degrading the forest by taking out the recruit trees and the regeneration. And the thinning studies that we've done that, that Mr. Field was, was looking for on questions for notice would suggest that that will add to the severity of fire rather than taking away from it. So I, I would be opposed to those kinds of proposals economically, but also environmentally, but also community safety wise as well.
Okay. Any, um, additional comments, Mr. Mackey or Mr. Gibbons, or you support that view?
Yeah, I'd just add that, uh, you know, uh, trees that have decay in them and therefore hollows are actually really important for the conservation of a lot of fauna and, uh, in New South Wales forests. And by harvesting them, you, you're just exacerbating the problem on reduce, on removing that structural habitat feature from logged forests.
Thank you. Mr. Mackey?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with the previous responses to that question. I, you know, I, I would just add that doing that, again, there's trade-off with other, other forest uses and values. So it would come at a cost. And, uh, you know, I'd be, I'd be puzzled as, as, as to what the, the man it is needed, which is kind of what David was getting at as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, my time has expired, so I'll throw to the government and that's Mr. Faraway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, professors. Um, before the inquiry started, I've tried to do a bit of research and, and, uh, reading up on different papers and different commentary that's been in the media. So my first questions, I'll direct to Professor Lyndon Meyer because I think you've had a bit of stuff that's been, uh, obviously papers recently. Um, but first of all, in, from what some of the research I've done, do you think, would you agree that most of the research into the impacts of timber harvesting has actually been done in Victorian forests?
Uh, my, most of my research has been done in Victorian forests up until most recently with the effects of fire that, that now goes right across the fire footprint for the two thousand nineteen, twenty fires. The research on the composition of forests in, uh, northeastern Victoria also goes across into the southeast New South Wales forests on forest composition. So there's been a lot more long-term research in Victoria. Some of those forest types in Victoria are also relevant to what happens in New South Wales. But there's been less research in New South Wales by and large than there has been in Victoria.
Okay. So, thank you, Professor. So Professor Lyndon Meyer, may, so the most recently you've published a few articles that deal with the issue of, of bushfire and forestry. Um, I think they were both here in Australia and overseas, correct?
Yes.
Yep. Um, so, and I think we may have had it referred to earlier, but it includes a paper that I was looking at entitled "Empirical Analysis of the Factors Influencing Fire Severity in Southeastern Australia." Now that, I think was only published a few weeks ago, wasn't it?
That's correct. That was, yeah, yes.
And it had a fair bit of media coverage because that's where I saw it, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, I suppose my point is, I just wanted to, to, in trying to get a Yeah, okay. Um, I suppose my point is, I just wanted to, to, in trying to get across this issue, you know, southeastern Australia is pretty broad, it's pretty big in, in terms of being defined. Like, in particular, what forests were the subject of that, of your paper?
So they were, so they were higher elevation in Victoria, they're called damp, wet and damp ecological vegetation class. So in a New South Wales context, those similar kind of forests will be alpine ash forests and, and shining gum forests. So the wetter kinds of forests that you see in montane and sub-montane areas. But that, that analysis also included lowland, dry forests. So that includes coastal stringy bark, coastal black butt, those kinds of forests.
So, so to con, to confirm, Professor, that, that paper, um, where you refer to southeastern Australia, it, it's predominantly based on Mount Nash Forest of Victoria?
No, no, that latest paper is based on analyses of a broad range of forest types across the fire footprint of two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. So that includes large areas of, of montane and lowland coastal forest in northeastern Victoria, which have strong analogues with what we see in southern New South Wales.
Okay, um, so Professor, would you be able to, or, or have you been able to do any research in particular over the last ten years here in New South Wales coastal forests? And in particular, I wanted to know where other eucalypt forest types may dominate or where our native forest harvesting rules and practices are different to Victoria? So obviously you've explained that a lot of the research is done in Victoria, some of your, or predominantly your research in the papers are Victorian based. I wanted to find out how they correlate, um, what are the differences with the har, forest harvesting rules and practices between the two states?
Okay, so in addition to our work in Victoria, we've also, the latest paper that went back this morning to the journal uh, looks at the fire footprint right across southern Queensland, right through New South Wales and Victoria for all of the two thousand and nineteen, twenty fires. So several million data points. And some other work that I've worked with, with Professor Mackey on fire refugia also goes right across the fire footprint. In addition, we have long-term studies in the Tumit area, which includes the, the native forest estate there as well as the plantation. And then we have a twenty-two-year study in the Jarvis Bay uh, area around Nowra and beyond. So um, yes, we specialize in mountain ash forests, but we work in a lot of other forest types. The harvesting regime in the central part of Victoria is clear-cutting or clear-felling. But there's various elements of selective harvesting, sheltered wood and, and other silver cultural systems in New South Wales that are partly applied in northeastern Victoria, um, and partly applied in other parts of central Victoria as well as in New South Wales.
Um, thank you, Professor. New South Wales Department of Primary Industries, they have a forest group and it did, to my knowledge, it did some statistical analysis of the extent of the severity of the nineteen, twenty bushfires last year. Um, that's obviously clearly in the space of, of, of all three of you, uh, before the committee today. Um, would you agree with that? Some of their statistical analysis that would sort of uh, go right into your scientific area of interest?
Yes.
Yep, so correct me if I'm wrong, but when I read it, 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 it appeared that they looked at the entire fire-affected area across New South Wales, which included the national parks, state forests, private forests. And they concluded, and I quote, "At the landscape's scale, fire severity was much the same regardless of tenure and in the state forest was not influenced by harvesting." So that is that they found no evidence of a relationship between forestry and the severity of the nineteen, twenty bushfires anywhere in the state. And I'll note that the recent New South Wales bushfire inquiry made no mention of the link. So I suppose with that long-drawn-out um, quote, uh, I wanted to know from either three, if you have, any of you as professors undertaken any equivalent analysis to the Department of Primary Industries?
So yes, I have. And that paper, as I said this morning, has just gone back to the journal. Um, one of the world's leading journals in this space. Now, one of the things that's really important in this space is that not all fires are created equal. So you can have a canopy scorch, which is a relatively low severity, slow-burning fire that damages the ca, the crown. That is a fundamentally different kind of fire to a crown fire or a crown burn, which completely consumes the canopy. And when you separate those kinds of fires and you look across the fire footprint, under all circumstances of fire weather, what we see unequivocally is that logged forests burn at significantly higher severity than intact forests. That it's a highly significant difference at low fire, um, fire weather, moderate fire weather and high fire weather. And that, that analysis has been overseen by our statistician at the Fender School and the results are unequivocal.
Okay, um, whilst I think I've still got some time, um, the other two professors, do you have a, a view on, on that question I posed to Dr. Lyndon Mayer around DPI and that, and the statistical analysis? And have you um, been able to do any equivalent research using that, that analysis to what DPI have done?
Uh, no, I haven't, I haven't done any analysis of that type. Uh, look, I, I would direct you to a very recently published paper on the two thousand and nineteen, twenty fires by David Bowman and others that also look at severities. And I, I've just, I've only glanced at that paper, so I would just direct you to it perhaps.
Uh, look at figure three of that paper. Cause we, that was the dataset we just re-analysed. So they mistakenly put the two kinds of fire together. When you pull them apart, the effect is very strong. But even when you put them together, you look at figure three of Bowman et al. twenty twenty-one and you'll see that logged forest always burns at higher severity.
So correct me, correct me if I've missed something here, but would you, are you suggesting maybe the DPI research isn't quite correct?
I would suggest that that's likely.
Okay, so you're, okay, so you're saying that in your, in your opinion, um.
No, no, not my opinion. I will, I will happily send you the figure from our paper that's just been submitted, which shows exactly what's happening in terms of differences in fire severity.
But that's quite an interesting, okay, I, I find that quite interesting. So anyway, that's something certainly we can follow up on at a later point. Just following some of your answers, Professor Lyndon Mayer, can you explain, I suppose, the differences um, between, and it goes back to some of those original questions, between the harvesting operations in New South Wales and Victoria? Because you'd have to agree, clearly there's some, there's a couple of key differences, isn't there? There's no clear felling, there's no, you know, New South Wales predominantly, you know, have selective harvesting, not intensive harvesting. That'd be correct. And we, we have in New South Wales, what I would say very strict controls on habitat tree retention. So would you agree that there are some, some stark differences in harvesting operations between New South Wales and Queen, and Victoria?
I, I would suggest that you need to look over time. And this is what Phil Gibbons was alerting to in his testimony before, that you need to look at compounding effects. So what happens is if you make multiple entries into, into a selectively harvested area and you do what's called high-lead logging, where you take out the largest trees on a repeated basis, you can end up with a similarly simplified forest structure as you can in a clear-felled forest. It's just that it occurs over multiple entries rather than a single operation. Is that correct, Phil?
That's right. And, and look, you know, if you, if you look at, uh, so, so most, most of New South Wales forest is Australian group selection uh, or modified clear-felling as in, yeah, in the Eden region. So it's fairly intensive over a period of time. You know, return cutting cycles are typically ten to fifteen years in the Australian group selection. So, you know, over time, it's not, it's not, it doesn't, it's, it's not like a, a bomb site like a clear fell. But the structure of the forest is still uniformly young after return cutting cycles. And, you know, you only have to go into some of the intensive harvest zone in New South Wales and it's quite clear that this is the case.
So, so I'm sorry if I've missed something here because I am trying to listen and take all this in and compare to some of the research I did before. Are you disputing that New South Wales has no, no clear felling?
Uh, yeah, yeah, so the, the Eden, some, some of the Eden region is managed with what they call a modified clear-felling regime. So there's still, if you go into the, some, the, those sites, they're still, they're very large areas. The majority of basal areas removed. Um, you know, I did my PhD in those forests and compared them with these Gippsland and basal area retention's not much greater.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you know, in Australian, but you know, you, you're right in that if you go north of Eden, it, it, it moves to Australian group selection. So it's not, it doesn't approach the type of clear felling that occurs in Victoria or Tasmania. So that, I, I totally agree with you there, but parts of Eden are managed very similarly to parts of Victoria.
Okay, thank you. So just another point that I, I really wanted to get all three, three professors' opinion.
Can I get my?
Oh, yeah.
Of course, I didn't get to answer that one. So in terms of that analysis, I haven't seen it, so I can't, um.
That's the, the DPI analysis.
I, I, I haven't seen it, so, so, so I can't really comment on its, um, on, on its accuracy. But what I can tell you is this, they, cause I had just completed a study where, where we've um, analyzed the burn severity um, of the mega fire and, and including an analysis by forest type, by fire weather conditions, by topography, uh, you know, and by land tenure. And, and I assume they would have used the same measure, which is a satellite. As we talked about, there's a satellite index for, for vegetation dryness, moisture. There's also one for burn severity, the burn severity index. And you end up with five classes. And one of the limitations of it is it saturates at the higher level. You can't actually see the difference between those top classes that David was talking about. And this is actually one of the issues we've dealt with in our papers. Uh, and, and then the other uh, comment I will make, um, you can't just um, uh, look at the, compare the data between land tenure's type, not land tenure types per se. Because you actually have to look at the land use history. For example, a lot of our national parks were logged, right? Uh, you know, et cetera. So uh, it, it, I, I'll just pass those comments. I haven't seen their work. I'd like to see it. Um, I've got, I've just finished a big, major studies looking at burn severity and all these different factors. And, and one conclusion we have drawn is you have to have very detailed, fine-scale mapping of land use history in order to actually tease out those, those higher levels of burns.
Thank you, Professor Mackey. I've only got time for one more question, happy to direct it to you to begin with. But I just wanted to get the opinion of the three of you before I finish up. That in terms of looking at those uh, the difference between harvesting operations between Victoria and New South Wales, would you, would you agree that, again, that New South Wales predominantly has selective harvesting and not intensive harvesting? And that we in New South Wales have pretty strict controls on habitat tree retention?
Uh, look, could I start, no, as I said in, in my opening statement, so the current conditions for habitat tree retention is, is that in a five to eight percent of the net harvested area uh, have, have habitat clumps. So the remaining ninety-two to ninety-five percent of the net harvested area, the, the requirement is that you leave what hollow-bearing trees there, okay? And um, and in some cases, there's, there's very few left and there's no recruitment of them. All right, so that, that, that part of the current condition isn't in, in line with what happens in other states. So in other words, and I've done some study recently and in my, in my statement, there's a, a chart that shows you what's happening to habitat trees in the net harvested area, that ninety-two to ninety-five percent of the net harvested area. And they're declining because there's no recruitment and they collapse, no replacement. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it's best practice in terms of habitat retention across the whole net harvest area in New South Wales.
I, I also see some fairly strong similarities between northeastern Victoria, East Gippsland, where uh, Professor Gibbons did his PhD and other, other students have might have worked. And also across the border into southeastern New South Wales, particularly in terms of the change in the composition of the forest. So I was talking about before, the shift towards dry, very flammable tree species like silver top ash is really quite demonstrable. And the knock-on impacts on things like koalas, greater gliders and other species is really quite profound.
I think my time's expired, Mr. Chair.
It, it has. Um, so thank you, gentlemen. Um, that concludes our session for this afternoon. Um, your insights were, were very welcome. Um, and I believe you may have taken some of those questions on, on, on notice. So the committee secretary will be in touch um, as to the timeline and, and getting that back to us. But once again, thank you for your time. We will now go on a quick change-over break. Um, so committee members are reminded to turn their videos off and turn themselves to mute. So thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, welcome back to our final uh, session this afternoon of day two in our inquiry into long-term sustainability and future of the timber and forest products industry. We now have with us this afternoon, Dr. Michelle Freeman and Steve Dobbins uh, from the Institute of Forestry of Australia and Australian Forest Growers. Um, given that Mr. Dobbins already gave evidence yesterday in another capacity, he does not need to take an oath or affirmation. But I would ask Dr. Michelle Freeman, can you state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation?
Uh, yes, so, sorry, do I follow you or?
No, if you, do you, do you have the um, oath or affirmation provided to you?
Possibly, sorry, I might, must have that in my email, do I?
You probably should, but do you want to take the oath or the affirmation? I can read it out to you and you can just repeat it.
I see there. Uh, yep, so I can do the affirmation? I've got it here in front of me now, sorry about that.
No, no problems at all.
Uh, so I'm Dr. Michelle Freeman, the Vice President of the Institute of Foresters of Australia and Australian Forest Growers. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And did either of you want to make a short opening statement before we go to questions?
Uh, yes, I was just gonna uh, introduce us and, and briefly our um, submission. It should only take sort of two to three minutes, if that's okay?
Yes, that's, that's fine.
Great, thanks. Um, so as you um, just heard, I'm the National Vice President of the Institute of Foresters of Australia and Australian Forest Growers. And Steve Dobbins is here as an IFA AFG member. So I know that you've already heard from Steve previously with a different hat, but today we're here as independent professional foresters and forest scientists to talk about the institute's submission to this inquiry. So the Institute of Foresters of Australia and Australian Forest Growers is an independent professional association for forest scientists, managers and growers. And as with many other professional associations like Engineers Australia and the Australian Medical Association, we offer a range of benefits and services to our members. So we work to provide professional development, a quarterly peer-reviewed scientific journal called Australian Forestry, a peer-indoors registration scheme, and we advocate for active and adaptive land management throughout Australia and across all tenures. So we've got approximately a thousand members and we're supported by an office of three part-time staff. And we're funded by our membership fees. So we vigorously defend our professional independence in all that we do. Our members are the experts in forestry and we operate across all aspects of forest and land management and tree growing throughout Australia, including as active firefighters and forest practitioners. And the word forestry really captures what we do. And some people may think that forestry is just about timber harvesting. And sometimes the word is misused in this way, uh, as is the term silver culture, which we do talk about within our submission. A silver culture is the toolkit of forestry. And what forestry in its true essence is, is the science and craft of creating, managing, conserving, using and caring for forests. Science because there's knowledge and learning that underpins forestry based on measurement and analysis. And craft because there's a skill and an art form that's needed in forestry that requires us to read, connect with and understand forests in ways that include but can't always be described by Western science alone. So institute members work across government agencies, conservation, forest fire management, urban forest management, in private forest companies as forest consultants and many are private landowners. Over ninety percent of our members have a science qualification specializing in forest science and environmental science. Many of our membership identify by the term forester. Uh, and that's a term that refers to people who are specialists in forest and tree management. Foresters have strong technical and operational expertise in forestry and we view the landscape as a whole, understanding that. understanding that ecosystems, the soil, water, animals, and plants are all interconnected. We also understand that forest health and resilience is inherently linked, and it's fundamental to human and community health and resilience. So in our submission, we've provided the background information and science that speaks to three key themes. The first is that as the sixth most forested country in the world, Australia has a moral responsibility and the opportunity to do more to meet our domestic timber supply locally. Active and adaptive management is required to overcome key challenges and to build health and resilience into our forests. And we're in dire need of a new shared and holistic vision for our forests, because there's much about what we're currently doing that clearly isn't working. Specifically, we provide a number of recommendations under key headings that address environmental, social, economic, and cultural aspects of forest management. And I wasn't planning to delve into those here, assuming that you've read our submission. And so in the interest of time, was wanting to allow the opportunity for you guys to get into the questions. But hopefully that gives you a good summary of who we are and what we are here for.
Yes, it does. Thank you. I'll pass to Mick Veach for the opposition.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks. Dr Freeman, your opening statement, you said things have to change. And I draw from that that means that there are things that aren't working in the way that we're managing our forests, that we're living with our forests, that we're sort of, well, essentially managing our forests. So what isn't working, in your view?
Well, there's a few different elements to that. I think in the first instance, what I referred to at the end there about a lack of shared vision, we seem to be seeing a lot of changes, policy decisions, those sort of forest wars issues playing out with concerns from this sort of polarised debate about how we manage our forests. And the current National Forest Policy Statement, which is the latest, or the current vision for our forests, was nineteen ninety-two. And although that was really groundbreaking at the time and has a lot of really great stuff in it and set us up, for example, with the car reserve system and other really positive developments, it fails to address key issues that we now currently face, including climate change. And in that time, we're also seeing increased severity and frequency of fires. And also increasing demand and concern about being able to face global challenges and build a bioeconomy, meet, you know, global carbon, sort of targets. And forestry, forest management, has a key role to play in that. So while we're caught up in this kind of forest wars, you know, conservation or production, what I would see would be more beneficial and useful is if we think about our forests as a holistic landscape, and we think about the way that we can use and manage our forests for multiple values regardless of land tenure. And those are the sorts of approaches that are being looked at now in Europe. So there's a lot of examples that we can draw from there, including better engaging First Nations people in forest management and learning from their worldviews. And I was going to say something else, and it slipped from my mind. So I don't know, Steve, if you wanted to make some comments on that.
I think the key that Michelle's touched on there is it isn't tenure-based. Forest management and the skill set that forest scientists like myself and Michelle possess are across tenure. And it seems that the focus is solely on the production forest and the view that the small percentage of production forests that may actually be harvested for timber is so dramatically different from what happens elsewhere through the forest estate. Threatened species, invasive plants, weeds, fire, don't respect lines on the map. And forest management and forest health need to be addressed on a landscape scale. The regional forest agreements and the car process in result of the National Forest Policy and looked at addressing and getting that balance between environment, social, and economic right. But since the car reserves were created, we have been neglecting, to an extent, what's happening in those reserve systems and focusing all of our attention on what's happening in the production forest. And in our view, to the detriment of what's happening in the conservation reserves. So it needs to be tenure-neutral and across the landscape.
Yeah, thank you. And this is an inquiry, I read your submission, this is an inquiry that's had more than, about two hundred and thirty or more submissions. We've had a couple of days of hearings, lots of information before the committee, where we're essentially trying to, Dr Freeman spoke about vision, we're trying to investigate, interrogate the policy settings that will take, you go forward for the forest industry, not just twenty years, but, you know, looking at towards fifty years or more even. One word that hasn't been used in the submissions and in the testimony over the last two days, and it surprises me, but it's about leadership. So I'd like to oppose, probably to Dr Freeman first and then Mr Dobbins. But do you think that this is an industry, a sector, that's crying out for leadership at the moment? Particularly political leadership.
Yes, yes, I was just going to confirm that. But yes, I think so. From my experience and having worked across a number of states in Australia and in forestry, it seems to be fairly common that we have these sort of decisions or policy settings that sort of get made in a bit of a vacuum and doesn't consider flow and implications. And I see, if we're talking about forestry and particularly the timber element of that, trying to separate out timber from other values or make decisions to, say, for example, increase the national park estate whilst still claiming that we can meet our domestic timber needs, whilst at the same time not investing in new approaches for establishing more plantations in appropriate timeframes to do that, are all interacting in ways which probably, again, speaks to that first question that are not working. And so when we talk about the need for leadership, I think, yes, there is a definite need for it. But it needs to be leadership that is not sort of done in a vacuum, that actually speaks to the community, which is what you're doing now, which is wonderful, and thinks about the flow on implications of decisions. Because sometimes I think that's my concern as we see decisions being made. And as foresters, we have concerns that they're going to have really dire flow on implications for the sustainability of Australia, Australia's ability to actively and adaptively manage our forests, for Australia to be able to contribute positively to climate change mitigation, bushfire mitigation activities. I sort of struggle to see that those linkages being made between decisions. And in part, I think that comes from that lack of vision in the first instance.
And Mr Dobbins, your view about that, the need or the adequacy, I guess, of the current political leadership in the past?
I think that there's got to be recognition of the time scales that we're talking about. If we're talking about political leadership, no disrespect to the committee, but we're really dealing in election cycles. And as a forester, someone who's tending a forest and growing either plantation timber over thirty-five, forty-year rotations, or in the case of native regrowth forests, eighty to a hundred-year cycles, there's got to be recognition of those time scales. And similarly, with things like fuel load accumulations, you're talking about seven to ten years being the critical stage after an event, like after the fires we've had two years ago, for the fuel levels to be reaching those similar levels again. So a three- to four-year election cycle doesn't align very well with any of the, I guess, planning horizons that forest scientists and forest land managers are used to dealing with.
Thank you. My time's up. So Chair, it's up to you guys.
Thank you. I'll pass to Mr Field.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you both for your attendance today and your submission. I'm not sure if you had a chance to listen to the previous round of speakers. I guess I just wanted to ask you to respond, but I'll explain quickly, I guess, their position. And I'm doing that in contrast to your submission. On page five, you make the comment in bold that well-managed harvesting could be used to strategically manage bushfire risks, and it helps forest health and resilience. And you point to silver cultural treatment, including thinning of forests for strategic fire breaks. Now, we heard evidence in the last session that contradicted that very strongly about thinning and highlighted that logged forests indeed, in every instance, assessed since the twenty nineteen twenty fires burned more severely than unlogged forests. So could you just, I guess, maybe address, you know, the information we received in that last session in that regard? And cite, if you could, the evidence that you've based your claim on?
Sure, I can start. So unfortunately, I wasn't able to listen in previously. So thanks for that update. I'm not sure who sort of made those comments, but with respect, I think there's ample scientific evidence to say that what they've stated is actually not correct. So in relation to how silver culture can actually help with bushfire mitigation, we know that larger trees are more resilient to fire, they're less likely to be killed. By thinning the forest, you can actually grow bigger trees quicker. So that's one way in which the silver culture can be used to actually enhance the resilience of our forests to bushfires when they do occur. Mechanical fuel reduction, including thinning, can be used to mitigate the risk of bushfires because it removes fuel. Now, of course, if you just thin the forest and then leave all those thinnings lying about on the ground, sure, you haven't reduced the fuel load, so that won't help. But there are options to deal with that, including taking that material away. You could then, you know, potentially even use it for things like biofuels or to some of these mills that are able to process smaller end logs and actually value-add those into products that can be outsold, whilst also having the benefit of having fuel reduced your forest. And also by thinning the forest, having the remaining trees grow bigger quicker for future fire resilience. And so I can provide a numerous range of papers that talk to all of those things and take that on notice, if that would help you.
That would be very useful. Unfortunately, I've got very limited time. I've only got less than one, less than two minutes left. You also make the comment that forests are a very effective means of sequestering carbon. I guess, would you accept, though, that the notion of leaving the forest to grow larger and more mature would be the best methodology to sequester carbon in the forest?
Did you want to take that, Steve?
There's, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change actually refutes that, Mr Field. Even in their most recent findings, they've made the statement that, and my words, not theirs, sustainably managed timber, or sustainably managed forests that are managed for a range of values, including the production of wood products that store carbon, is the most successful opportunity for carbon abatement and mitigation. The work that's been done by New South Wales Department of Primary Industry over the last fifteen years, in particular by Fabiano Zimmens, is world-class and world-renowned. And again, there's a number of papers we can provide you that show, and one of them's titled, Harvested forests provide the greatest ongoing greenhouse gas benefits. There's a range of papers that support that.
I would appreciate if you could provide those links. That would be very useful for us. I think my time's expired, though. But if you did want to expand on something, Dr Freeman, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to say, coming back to this point, that we can't look at issues in isolation. There are certainly some areas of forest that should be, you know, left relatively untouched state. But overwhelmingly, and we see this more, there's actually a recent paper out today from an Aboriginal academic saying that the concept of wilderness, where we exclude human management from our forests, is actually not aligned with Aboriginal worldviews and is not helpful, not only to, you know, sort of the carbon and those sorts of aspects, but when you think about, as we just spoke about, the fire mitigation aspects, the cultural and human health and wellbeing aspects that come from it, and also potentially the lost opportunities from having that management in the bush so that we're actually actively and adaptively using all the tools in the toolkit to overcome things like biodiversity decline. What's been shown, that increasing human connection with nature rather than removing humans from nature is actually a much, much, much more, much better thing for our forests and for the health and resilience of our forests and communities moving into the future. So we also need to be careful that we're not just thinking about how we manage our forests for one value like carbon, but all the interlinked values that come from those sorts of decisions that we make.
Thank you. I'm not sure anyone's quite talking about removing all human interaction, but I appreciate that advice. And thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I might ask you to take a few questions on notice. I'm conscious of time and probably better in more detail. But you talked about emerging technologies in processing, growing, harvesting, and hauling. And just on notice, whether you'd be able to provide some examples to the committee of those technologies that are emerging that we should be looking at investing in and supporting?
Yep, we can take that on notice, or do you want a bit of an answer to that now as well?
Oh, I think perhaps on notice, just conscious of the time. And I've got a couple of questions I do want to get through. And the CFMEU proposed a forestry advisory council that would be comprised of experts from industry to actually advise government. In principle, would be that something you would support?
It's something that has been trialled in the past. There was a forest industry task force in New South Wales, which hasn't actually been active over the last couple of years. But that was quite a useful forum for information flow to and from government. And also was instrumental in setting up or informing on the forest industry roadmap several years ago. So reinvigorating something like the Forest Industry Task Force would be certainly welcome in New South Wales.
Okay, thank you. Dr, in your opening statement, you spoke about that you provide services to your members, including education. Now, some of the evidence we've received today and through other submissions talked about a need to improve the education on silver culture. Would you agree with those statements that we need to improve the education on silver culture?
Hundred percent. I think silver culture is one of the most important tools that we have in the toolkit, not only for producing a sustainable yield of timber, whether it's from native or plantation forest or the full range really, and farm forest land, but also, as we've just spoken about, for the health and resilience of our forests and combating climate change and sequestering carbon. So silver culture really is the foundation to all of that. And I think it's a somewhat dying art. And in terms of our teachings in universities, some of the fields that have previously had that as a dedicated subject no longer exist. And so we are losing some of this knowledge, which is a real problem, I think, moving forward.
Okay, thank you. And just one final question. In your submission, when you're talking about the car system, you say there's an inadequacy of minimal management intervention. Do you believe that's a case of inadequate funding to do proper management intervention? Or is it a lack of will on the ground? Or is it both? Or is it something else?
It's a combination of factors. Certainly with the expansion of the car reserve system as part of the regional forest agreements, there was a huge increase in land base. But that wasn't matched necessarily with budget. I did make the comment yesterday that OEH costs the taxpayer a hundred and twenty-one dollars a hectare to manage conservation in New South Wales, whereas the state forests taxpayer contributes nine dollars a hectare. Whereas the state forests, uh, taxpayer contributes nine dollars a hectare. Those figures are sound. Um, and the other issue with, there are some issues with ideology within the department, um, managing conservation areas. And that's why I guess we're suggesting that active and adaptive management should be adopted across the landscape. We can't be managing forests for forest health, uh, on one side of the map. Because it's state forest differently from how we should be managing it on the other. And then the people who are working in both on the ground in particular, in, in O E H, uh, and state forests are all members of the IFA. Um, they're all, they're forest scientists on both sides of the fence. And I know talking to the ones that are working on the conservation side, sometimes they do feel frustrated that, uh, things that they would like to do, um, uh, go against government or, or departmental policy. So there are some issues there and I would suggest there's probably the same sort of issues on the Forest Corp side of the fence as well.
Okay, thank you. That's great. Um, my time's expired, so I'm, I'm looking for a government member to take charge. Thank you, Mr Martin.
Uh, thank you Chair. Just got a quick question picking up, um, on something, um, that Michelle Freeman, um, mentioned a few minutes ago regarding remu- removing human interaction and that it wasn't ideal for the health of the forest. Would you be able to elaborate a bit more, more on that? That's quite fascinating.
Sure. It's interesting in Australia, we still have this quite colonial view about nature where humans are there and nature is there. And the best thing for the environment is to have wilderness doing its thing, uh, and we just do our thing separate to that over there. And I guess, you know, we've spoken about it a bit already. Um, that's, that sort of approach is unhelpful from not only a human health perspective, but the environmental health perspective. And you can see that, um, those changes in management have been already identified and embraced in Europe where they've realised that, you know, humans are animals. We are part of nature and the more that we try to separate ourselves from it, the less we understand about it. So much of what we do in, in forestry and as foresters is because we're in the bush observing, watching, learning. Similar to, you know, Aboriginal people for the last sixty thousand plus years, you know, being out in the environment is what actually enabled them to see changes as they were, were occurring, implement management that was appropriate, um, for what was happening in the landscape at the time. And with the huge challenges that we now face, um, continuing ongoing declines of, of biodiversity and other things. We need to be monitoring, looking and being out in the bush, um, in order to actually appropriately respond to those challenges.
Thank you. Um, that's all from me Chair, thank you.
Chair, I've, I've got a very quick one. Thank you. Uh, thank you both for, um, appearing. Uh, Dr Freeman, you mentioned, um, uh, briefly and in your submission, uh, references to opportunities for first peoples. Could you expand on where you might, um, identify, uh, the best opportunity to tap into their expertise? And, uh, the, uh, the second question is that, uh, previous witnesses have, um, indicated that, uh, the economics has now changed for the industry. Um, if that is the case and, uh, that proposition is true, do you have any thoughts on how the industry could adapt or should adapt, um, to remain viable in the years ahead?
Uh, so about First Nations involvement, um, I mean, I have to say that New South Wales really is a forerunner in many ways in this sense. There's some of the things that Forestry Corporation does around, uh, cultural burning, uh, um, really fantastic and probably are above and beyond where other states currently are in that space. If you look to Canada though, there's, um, some really interesting kind of arrangements, um, memorandums of understanding and, and different tools that they're using. Leases over particular areas of land where Aboriginal people are able to manage that forest in ways that they see fit. And many of them are actually looking to, um, commercial timber production as part of a broader suite of management activities that they take inland that's, um, been made available to them. Because the timber production aspect actually allows them to generate income and, um, employment for their people who have been, um, struggling on that front for some time. So there are, um, although I think New South Wales is really, as I said, um, on a good path, there are additional things and, and the commercial timber production side of Aboriginal land, uh, oh, the benefits that commercial timber production can provide to, um, indigenous communities as well as the ecological management aspects are, um, two opportunities there.
And bearing in mind.
The economics, uh, Mr Dobbins?
I was just going to, uh, just follow on from Michelle. One of the things that probably isn't recognised widely in New South Wales is that local land councils are one of the largest private landowners in, in the state. And they do have private native forestry landowners in the state. So they do have quite a significant, uh, area of land that they have under their control, um, and to a degree, uh, uh, crying out for some information or assistance in how that might be managed. And I know that local land services are, are reaching out, uh, to those communities, offering assistance. In regards to, um, cost changes, uh, it, it, that may be a question better, uh, left for industry to answer rather than, uh, instituted for us.
Though, uh, one comment I might make on that, I'm assuming that comment is implying that the, um, that commercial timber production is becoming uneconomic. Is that, having not heard, if you made those previous comments, is that right? So, uh, and I guess if that's the case, there must be talking about, um, na- na- native forests as opposed to plantations, because we know plantations are, are, um, positive economic exercise. What I would say in relation to timber production on public land is that I think that we shouldn't be expecting it to be raking in that huge profit. Because if you are managing for all those other value, values, um, you, you know, hopefully you're breaking even, but your, your whole encompassing, um, group of management actions should mean that, that timber production in and of itself, um, is not, so you shouldn't be looking for it to be an economic exercise. It's about the flow on benefits. Um, and that's what we should be measuring that activity in. And that's where the value is in commercial timber production on native forest land, which is the opportunities to conduct silver culture and, um, and do things to actually manage for threatened species and other things, as well as provide beautiful, um, high-quality timber products that you can't get from anywhere else at the moment. So, um, if we think about the full range of values and flow and, uh, flow on benefits of timber production to communities and society, then that's where we should be looking at the value of that activity.
And one of the, one of the things we have made the point within our submission is that there should be a, a cost benefit analysis across the landscape, across all tenures.
Absolutely.
It's, it's, uh, it's okay to say that, um, the timber industry may not be making the, um, New South Wales state coffers a lot. But by the same token, we should be looking at the cost benefit analysis of, uh, conservation in the state as well. Bearing in mind that state forest estate, uh, isn't all available for harvest. Uh, the state forest estate has, uh, more than half of its, uh, land base already in, uh, formal and informal reserves and providing a conservation benefit as well. So, uh, we need to bear that in mind and look at, look at across the landscape. And ask whether conservation management in New South Wales is a cost benefit, uh, as well and, uh, whether it is sustainable.
Thank you. Thanks Chair.
Thank you. Um, looking like there's no other questions from the government, uh, that's pretty much time elapsed. Um, anyway, so I would thank, um, both of you for your time this afternoon, um, in the answers that you provided. And, um, also obviously the questions that you have agreed to take on, on notice and come back to us with. The Community Secretary will be in touch, um, as to how that can be done. Um, and just once again, thank you.